Okay, we're now live. Just want to, we acknowledge, appreciate that the land in which we gather is traditional on and ceded territory of the Megma First Nation, called order. Just before we go to call to order, I did have an invite from Mayor Dan Kucha and his council. They would like to have a joint meeting of the two councils in the new year. We can do it down here in Charlottetown, or we can do it in Summerside. And some of the issues that he pointed out, revenue sharing, policing, provincial community, provincial emergency, temporary emergency shelters, provincial community wellness outreach centers, climate mitigation, adaptation, and transit. So just think about it over the Christmas period, and you can send Jackie and myself an email, and we'll just see where it'll go, but something to think about? Okay. You have something? Council Bernard?
Just on the agenda, Your Worship. I'm just wondering if we can move my committee to the top. We have Wayne Long, who has got to get back to the world pair of sledge hockey tournament that's going on now, so he's kind of still in double duty.
Right.
Laura was away on business, and she doesn't fly in again until tomorrow morning. So if I can move that committee to the top, please?
Can we just do that, do that under approval agenda? And we'll move it?
That's what I said to you, but you told me to shut up now.
Okay. Declarations of conflict of interest. Any declarations? Okay, so with approval agenda, Council Bernard has requested that number 6.9 moves to 6.1, and 6.1 become 6.2, respectively, consecutively. Need someone to move that? Moved by Council Beck, Council Ramsey seconded. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have two, no, three sets of minutes. Regular meeting, November 12th, 2024. Special meetings, November 18th and 26th. I need someone to move them. One by Council McKinnon, second by Council Bernard. All in favor? Okay. Any business arising out of the minutes? No business? Okay, Council Bernard, we'll go with you first. Wayne's here, and who else is with Wayne? Just Wayne? Do you want to take the chair there, our chair? Okay.
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, Your Worship, like I say, it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to chair the Economic Tourism and Culture Committee. As everyone knows, we have probably the best in the industry in Wayne Long and Laura Lee and what they do, Your Worship. They've got lots of accolades, and we've had lots of, lots of success. And also with our committee members, we have Kevin Ramsey, who chaired this committee in the past, Your Worship, and Council Miss Twill. So we'll be looking to work together to bring more large events and look into the conscious, bring some conscious to our city, Your Worship. The Grand Slam occurring was a $3 million spinoff. We'll be looking to pursue and win bids to bring more of these large events home, Your Worship, and if not, why not? What are, what may be some of the constraints? As for the staff right now, I could tell you they have been submitting proposals to the Government of Canada for funding for economic tourism and cultural projects for 2025, so that's, that's underway. And as everybody knows, the Charlottetown Christmas Festival is in full swing, Your Worship, until January 2nd. I do want to give a shout out to city staff on the municipalities' holidays events, particularly the Christmas tree lighting and the Christmas parade. I think everyone would agree, what a job well done. So just wanted to give them a shout out. And also, Your Worship, very proud to say our city is sparkling, festive decor, a job well done by public work staff. It looks so good, I wouldn't be surprised if City Hall gets a call from Hallmark to do a film for a Christmas show. So very festive out there. And I believe we should also thank Discovery Charlottetown for their leadership on the Victorian Christmas market and the mistletoe market, Your Worship. Well done, and a good addition to the city. And I also want to give a public thank you to Winston Bryan and his wife for thinking of Charlottetown with the beautiful Christmas, Christmas tree they donated to the city, Your Worship. It may very well be the most beautiful tree the city has ever put up, but nice of them to think of us. And, Your Worship, we have two resolutions for council consideration. If I can answer any questions, I will.
Any questions on the report? Okay, want to go to the first resolution? So we're going to use the electronic voting. We got Rory here as backup.
Moved by Council Bernard, seconded by Council Ramsey. Be it resolved, whereas on September 19th, 2024, a presentation to the Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee regarding potential declaration of support to host an ayahuasca ceremony in Charlottetown was requested. And whereas staff have engaged in substantial discussions with the Charlottetown Police Services, the Government of Prince Edward Island, Health PEI and Tourism PEI, and legal council regarding the legal status of ayahuasca and its key component, DMT, therefore be it resolved that due to legal complexities surrounding the use of ayahuasca and DMT, as well as the potential risk to the city, council refrain from issuing a formal declaration of support.
Council Beck?
Thank you for that, Council Bernard, your report and this. I'm just wondering, we get all kinds of presentations that come in, and, you know, I'm thinking of, recently we had tennis presentation for Down Around the Waterfront. Last year, we had a presentation on the Atlantic Moose. You know, sometimes ideas move ahead and sometimes they don't. I'm just kind of wondering why this is in the form of a resolution, if we're not, like, we get these requests, we get these presentations all the time, and I was just kind of wondering why it's even here. Not that I'm, you know, I'm not against it or anything, but just kind of, I'm just, maybe if you could give a little bit of enlightenment on that for me? Thanks.
Council Bernard?
Thank you, Council Beck. So I wasn't part of this presentation, this was before I took the chairmanship, so this was in the works, we had a discussion on it. As you can see from the information here, why we're not recommending going ahead. Good question, as far as why, because I, I of the same would have thought, once it died, it died on the floor. But some say that when a, when a request comes to the committee, it usually has to go to council to get an answer, yes or no. So that's why this one, this one's here. Now unless someone else can give a better answer, but I mean, I, like you, you're right, there is some presentations that come, they make a presentation. This, this, this is a little bit different in that they're requesting the city to approve this. So they're looking for an answer, are we approving it or are we not approving it? As opposed to some of the other presentations that come in, they're looking for funding. So that's, unless, unless either Wayne or, or CIO has a better answer.
Could we go to Mr. Wayne Long? Wayne?
Your Worship, through to Council Bernard and Beck, it's my understanding that once a request comes forward for, in this case, for official support or declaration that the city would endorse this entity, that once it goes to the committee regardless of their decision, it's the final decision rests with council. So the recommendation comes from the committee to council regardless if there's support or not support on the item. This particular file came to economic development through an original meeting with Charlottetown Police Services, and it landed on our door, given that there was a tourism potential element associated with it and/or economic development, so that's how it arrived.
So that at the end of the day, it's because they were looking for a decision from council?
Questions called, so just give me a second here. Please vote, yea or nay? Okay, can I just, do you want to answer that? I have to bounce over here now, hold on.
You're, if you're voting in favor, you're voting in favor of council refraying from issuing a formal declaration of support.
Yeah. You vote. Okay, it's open, so please vote. Ten zero. Second one? Thank you.
Moved by Council Bernard, seconded by Council Ramsey. Be it resolved, whereas council supported entering into a five-year agreement under the city's tax incentive strategy with the Charlottetown Area Development Corporation, Bio Alliance Incubator on April 9th, 2024. And whereas the initial application from the Charlottetown Area Development Corporation was seeking a 10-year tax incentive agreement, and therefore a request for an appeal of the decision from April 9th, 2024 was received. And whereas an independent firm was consulted to review the file and recommend that the 10-year application be considered with performance metrics at years three, five, and eight of the agreement, therefore be it resolved that council support entering into an extended 10-year agreement with the Charlottetown Area Development Corporation Bio Alliance Incubator for a temporary graduated suspension of municipal taxes, 90% year one decreasing to 10% year 10, with modified terms including clear performance metrics and a regular review mechanism in years three, five, and eight of the exemption. And further that the mayor and CIO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Council Bernard, do you want to address it first before you get some questions?
Yeah, I'll just give a little rundown. The reason that we believe this should be approved by council is this industry has been considered a high-impact industry. The recommended 10-year, 10-year temporary graduated suspension of municipal taxes will have clear performance metrics in place, with regular reviewing, review mechanisms at year three, five, and year eight, Your Worship. The performance metrics would include economic impact targets, sustainability standards, and strategic alignment with the city's goals. The agreement includes language that reserves the city's right to adjust the cap or cancel the exception, the exemption, if the performance conditions are not met. So, Your Worship, just a couple other highlights here. The PEI bio science sector is thriving, now one of the leading industries in the province and in the Atlantic region. The growing economic impact and return on investment of public dollars is unmatched. The city of Charlottetown has been a major beneficiary of this growth. The Bio Alliance, federal and provincial governments have invested heavily in enabling infrastructure in Charlottetown to support the sector. This is still a young industry that requires public sector investment to enable and exhilarate that growth. The return on investment has been very positive. So just to give you an idea of the return on investment on the bio science cluster so far to date, Your Worship, in 2022, it's estimated to have generated $90.2 million worth of tax revenue. So that includes the federal government collecting $45.9 million, the provincial government's $34.2 million, and the local government, the city, $10.1 million. So it's, it is a high-impact industry, Your Worship, and one that we should be supporting. Thank you.
Okay. Council Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. As I was reading through the report and trying to understand this resolution a little bit better, I do have a couple of questions. So in looking at the policy, it does state that it's, I think we enter into a five-year agreement when we do this. So my first question I'd have to the chair is, have we, has there been any others that we've offered longer term than five? Like in this case, we're looking to extend over 10-year through a tax incentive program? That'd be my first question. And then the second is, you know, is, I thought when the, and maybe I'm not fully understanding, but I thought when the, when the project was over, or the, the term of when they would get the tax incentive, I think we did a number of years, five years, I think, was the original one that we did in this. So like, would we, is this a standard that we would have? Is like, you could go up to 10 years' worth of tax incentives? Like, I'm not fully understanding why this particular industry would, would need 10, but what about everybody else that we've given five years? Would they come back and want 10 years as well? So I'm confused as to why this industry would benefit from that from a 10-year perspective. So if you could address that for me, it might help me make my decision here this evening. Because there's about a $200,000 difference in revenue lost if we do the 10-year, if I understand that correctly, from the five-year to the, to the 10-year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Roughly.
Council Bernard?
Yeah, so we used, there was a time we did 10-years, it's been, it's been a while now. So the policy right now is the five-year. And that was agreed by council whenever they applied for funding, although they, they wanted to, they wanted us to look at the 10-year. So at first, I think the committee said no, but they did hire a consultant to review because, like I say, our policy has been five years. Now, years ago, we used to have 10-year policy, but it was switched to five. So I can't say it's never happened, it has. This particular industry is, is why we got a consultant and a consultant's report to review of going to the 10 years and the benefits to the city and to this bio sector industry. So from that, the consultants come back, and as you've read the report there, they're recommending the 10 years. And basically, the difference here between a lot of the others we've given is the, the high-impact industry that it is. So this is a one-off. We haven't had it before where we've had the metrics put in place, which I think is a good thing. I think it's something we should look at, at all the tax incentives now, where we can look back at, at periodic and see if they're, those metrics are in place to what they agreed to. But to answer your question, it's been a while since we've done a 10-year, and the reason we're looking at this one is because we consider it a high-impact industry. And what?
Would this open up for other? Would this open up for others who may be in a, in a term right now that may want to use the same metrics, want to use all the same evaluation to say, well, we're an important industry too, we can do the same thing?
Yeah.
And then we were kind of opening this up?
And I, and I think it can lead to that. You've seen the documents there and the difference in the tax revenue, the tax revenue that it brings into the city. So there will be a sizable benefit for the city in the future years. Other businesses, if they're considered to be a high-impact business, then we will definitely be looking at it through the same process.
Council Robert Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Council Bernard, and Council Matar for asking such great questions. I, like Justin, have concerns. You know, this is a $179,000 tax bonus. This Bio Alliance, they, they would understand the rules in place. I think back when they applied, council agreed to it. That's an incentive for a business. But now you come back and say, well, I want to appeal your decision. I want double what everybody else is getting. And I don't think that's fair, in my opinion. Those were the agreements on the table at the time when they applied, and now, like that was three or four or five years ago, now they're coming back wanting double. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair to the city residents that we're going to be giving away $179,000 to, to a business. You know, other businesses that follow the rules, apply the same way, they should be treated equally. Now, if one person all of a sudden comes up and says, well, I have a consultant, they say I should get it, well, council's decision is we have a bylaw in place, it's a tax incentive strategy. So play by the rules, don't, don't sit here and start changing them as they go. So everybody else that played by the rules, they'll, they'll think, well, you know, we should have asked, but, but it never happened. So, you know, I, I think this moving forward, if we want to do that, let's put that in place for future development, but not in the middle of the game. So I can't support it, but I thank you for your explanation.
Okay. Council Bernard?
Each to their own. Like I say, it's, it's a high-impact industry, it brings a lot of tax revenue to the city of Charlottetown. The other thing that I didn't say was, in the bio, the, the bio science cluster, this, this incubator, this also attracts other businesses to come to, come to the city too. So it's, to me, it's a no-brainer, it makes a lot of sense, it's, it's, this here tax incentive for five-year agreement, I believe we just passed that April 9th, 2024. So it hasn't been in place for a long time, only year one has been the benefit to them. So I don't blame them for, for coming back and, and asking for us to relook at this again. And I think that's why the staff went ahead and got a consultant in the business, the experts to be able to review this and have a look at, make the recommendations. I think the recommendations are pretty clear. I just think that the benefits strongly outweigh paying a little bit of taxes. The taxes are $358,000 over 10 years. We've seen that the, that the local government through this cluster has already taken in $10.1 million. So, thank you, Your Worship.
Do, Council McCabe?
Thank you. And I liked, Council Duran, you know, I see, I just went back and looked, and we do actually have a policy in place, and part of what we can do is look at the policy, either change our policy, make amendments to our policy, but to vote tonight against what we have in our existing policy, I wouldn't be comfortable with. There's reasons why we have policies, those are our guidelines to follow. Until we change the policy, which is our job, or amend it, I'm not going to be able to support the application either.
Council Beck?
Yeah, you know, we have guidelines for pretty much everything, and we always make variances, we make exceptions, we make accommodations when the shoe fits. And when I look at the PEI Bio Alliance industry, we're, we're, we're a province that's heavily reliant on primary industries, fishing, tourism, agriculture. The PEI Bio Alliance was brought in to help diversify our economy, and the growth that it has been demonstrated over the last number of years is, is very remarkable. And the projections to possibly overtake agriculture as our number one industry on the island, and that we can have that industry centered here in Charlottetown with the potential growth of good paying, private sector jobs that are going to help diversify our economy and strengthen our economy for the long term. So, yeah, we have rules and regulations, but sometimes everyone's clamors for a policy until a policy doesn't necessarily fit. And in this situation here, I think our policy may not fit, because I think the request is reasonable, given the proven track record that the PEI Bio Alliance has had, and given the projections of what it could potentially mean not only to Charlottetown, but to the provincial economy as well. So although we approved a five-year term back a while ago, I'm certainly supportive of this, and I think it's something that we should get behind.
Council McCabe, second time?
It is, thank you. And I definitely agree that it's a very valuable. And I, I definitely agree that it's a very valuable part of our economy, and we need to pay attention. But I think we need to still go back and change our policy to reflect that, rather than constantly be changing on one-offs. For me, I'd rather go back and look at that and change it so that we have, make room in our policies. I'm just thinking that we're trying to straighten our ship and follow our policies. I'm going to have to stay with that.
Counsel Matar.
Thank you, my second time up. Yeah, and I'm along the same lines. Like, I think, you know, there's other industries, thinking of the tourism industry. I, I do recall last year, I think, that we approved a local business here in the tax incentive program. So, you know, they would argue that there is equally important from an industry perspective, and will likely come now looking for an exemption the same way, for 10-years and a tax thing that way. So I think we're opening up Pandora's Box here on this situation. I don't disagree that if during policy time, we look at it, or during application time, that we determine at that point in time whether or not it's, you know, warrants itself, but midstream kindly. I think it's, we're really setting ourselves up here for other industries to come looking for the same opportunities. So for that reason, I won't be supporting the resolution this evening.
Counsel Rebecca, second time. Counsel Bernard, just let them ask questions.
I, I, I think it's, I think these things have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. Because we open it for one, it's the same with when we make a variance on a, on a planning application. Because we approve a planning application in one area, it does not necessarily mean that we have to approve all applications based on that. That's been determined because we've discussed that here, and we've ascertained that. And I think in this particular situation, you look at each of the individual cases on its own merits. And in this particular case, we're talking about an incentive that will reap rewards long-term to our economy. And if someone comes back down the road and they've got another brilliant idea that could potentially help the city of Charlottetown and boost everything and reap the rewards of that investment, then we'll entertain it based on those particular merits. But I'm not sitting here saying that since we've applied this, that we're going to give it to every application that comes forth. We look at each individual case, we, we have the policy for the large majority of cases. But if an exceptional case comes along, high-impact, long-term benefit, tremendous potential, and growth, growth is the important part here. It's not only what it's brought to a sofa, but it's the potential of what it can bring to the future. So I think on this particular instance, I think we have to get behind it again, and I, and I will be voting for it.
Do you want to answer? Or do you want to just save them for the end because there's a couple more questions in the queue? Let's just save them, just take note of them. Counsel, Deputy Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship. I too will support the resolution this evening. Most of the rationale has been spoken of, particularly by Counsel Rebecca, and a great analogy where we look at our zoning and development bylaw and the variances and site-specific exemptions that we continuously look at through a different lens. And so that being said, I will, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't say that the policy is not valid and important for us to have, but there are times when an exception to policies can be looked at. And the only recommendation, perhaps, if we do want to add on to this policy at a later date, you know, a caveat that would state that, you know, there are exceptions to policies, but we have that in most situations. So I will be supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, I, I, I hope people don't get hung up on, you know, we have a five-year policy, so I'm going to say no to this because we, we don't have a 10-year policy. And this is, this is, and Counsel Beck talked about it also, but sometimes when you have something like this that comes across, you don't want to lose that opportunity. And this is, as we've said before, I mean, the Bio Alliance is a regional bio, bioscience sector leader. There's 2,200 employees, 55 companies overall, $600 million in export sales. Just because we don't have that policy, this opens the door for the high-impact policies like this that we never had before. I don't think I would shut the door just because we're saying, well, our policy now is five-years, so we don't need, we don't need that sector. We don't need to help that sector. To me, this, this is a, this is an opportunity to help grow this sector even larger, and we, and we see how much success that's been in this, this particular Bio Alliance sector. So I wouldn't let the five-year, that could still be, you know, the policy could still be amended. You know, this is opening the door for that, this 10-year policy on the tax, tax incentive. So, you know, I, I look at it as we have our five-year policy, and there could be a 10-year policy on high-impact industries. But I don't think you shut the door on it and say no to it.
Counsel Mitchell Twill.
I think when you look at the bioscience sector, I understand it's a non-for-profit. It's, it's, it's a group of individuals that have come together. They have an excellent track record in our city. We're very fortunate to have the bioscience sector in the city of Charlottetown. Let's make no mistake about it. We're very, very fortunate. I can tell you that, you know, if we don't partner with them and work with them, whether it's a tax incentive strategy, what other incentive, or any other incentive that, that is, that could be on the table, we have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, this sector can go anywhere. It's huge in Nova Scotia, Halifax, Toronto, Montreal, and we're lucky here in Prince Edward Island to have the bioscience sector here. And if you look back in recent years, the growth and development is, is unprecedented. And I believe the presentation that we heard was, they need a sustainable, a sustainable opportunity to be able to plan, not just for five-years, but for 10-years and even longer. It's not just a five-year venture. It's, you know, it's a long-term, long-term plan that they have to get their heads around to be able to plan, provide the necessary infrastructure, and that comes with a cost. There's a lot of expenditures that this sector has to incur and has to, has to deal with. And I, I think we should partner with them to make it sustainable. I really do. Now, having said that, you know, we hear about the policy and strategies and, you know, what else can we do for business in our city? Well, lots of small business, for example, a lot of entrepreneurs that want to get into business are experiencing, you know, tremendous costs just to get the doors open, to provide the infrastructure and the amenities. So this could be the incentive to be able to look at a global strategy, a global plan of action, where, you know, the city of Charlottetown could be working with small businesses and helping entice small businesses to locate here in Charlottetown and help entrepreneurs, help them, whether it's a tax incentive or any other strategy that we can explore and examine. So at the committee level, I asked a lot of questions about the economic spin-offs, and I think the economic spin-offs speak for themselves. So again, I want to impress upon council, we're very fortunate to have the bio-sector here in this city. I certainly want to, wouldn't want to lose the bio-sector organization, and I certainly wouldn't want to lose the potential for the growth and development that it has to offer. And I believe we've already experienced, you know, a lot of benefits, spin-offs, and I believe it'll play huge dividends as we walk into the future. So this, I think, opens the door to explore other opportunities. And I believe Chairman Bernard, that's, that's what we're going to be doing in, you know, in the new year, because we have a lot of people who want to do business in our city, and we need to help and work with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Counsel John McAllaire.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I'll be brief. And I'm, I'm in favor of the resolution for many of the same reasons that the councillors that spoke before me. It's, you know, Rory Francis and his team are doing a tremendous job putting this Bio Alliance and, and this sector, putting Charlottetown and the province on the map. It's, it's still a young industry that requires, you know, continues to require public support. And as for the policy, five or 10-years, if there's a case or situation to make an exception, this is it. And if there's another one that comes along, that, that is equal to it, I'd be more than happy to, to support that as well, if, regardless of a five- or 10-year policy. So I think we have to be nimble on this and, you know, show that, that we're, want to support this business and, and industry. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Bernard, just on page 227, the digital copy, and with Wayne here, it says, "The Charlottetown Area Development Corporation's Bio-Manufacturing Incubator", incubator. So this is not a company per se. This is C A D C that is setting up a incubator for other companies to come here and to launch in this incubator. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's part of the Bio, Bio Alliance.
Right. Okay. So it's not going to, like, BioVector, it's not going to any of the companies that are out?
Out, out in the new industrial park.
Yeah, no, I know where it is. Okay. So it's, okay. So it's, again, this is an exception to the rule. It's not for a company per se. It's for Charlottetown Area Development Corporation to provide a place for new companies to come in to Charlottetown to set up, and if they take off, they will set up a plant somewhere in the West Royal Industrial Park and pay taxes going forward. Okay.
Yeah. And they could set up anywhere else.
Correct.
If you'd like to keep them in the city.
Okay. Questions called. Just one second. Oh. Ready to vote? And open. Please cast your vote. Thank you. All in? Chips are down? 73, and I just have to, okay. 73. Just leave that up there, please. Just one second. Okay. Thank you. And, okay. Okay. So is that it? Is it for your report? You had something else to add to it? Go ahead.
Your worship, I just want, I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy, joyous and relaxing Christmas season. One other thing, since we won't be here till after the New Year, the signature New Year's event, the Capitol New Year's, returning to Founder's Hall in the market for its third year. The event will take place December 31st, obviously, from 4:00 to 8:00, and will feature an exciting lineup of free, family-friendly programming, including live entertainment and fireworks. The full schedule is available now on the charlottetown dot C A N Y E. Okay? So other than that, your worship, I'm all done. So again, wishing everybody a happy and merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. So can we go back up to 6.2? Planning and Heritage, Deputy Mayor Lanny Yankoff, monthly report and resolutions.
Thank you, your worship. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Heritage Board, the Design Review Board, and the Planning Board have not met since our last council meeting. The Planning and Heritage Committee did meet on Tuesday, December 3rd. Minutes are in your package as well. We have two resolutions for your consideration this evening, and you'll also see a list of the permits that have been granted this past month also in your package. And if anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
Counsel Matar.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Chair, for your report. As, as everyone knows, on November 12th, I submitted a notice of motion for, to postpone the public meeting in regards to the application to move, or sorry, to application to extend the outreach center and the shelter down on Park Street. So I had, attend, last week, I attended the Planning and Heritage Committee to speak to that, and there was much discussion around that notice of motion and probably some confusion as to, you know, whether it would come here to be supported or voted upon. But during my meeting, it was, I was, it was discovered by myself that Planning and Heritage Committee or Board decided that they wouldn't be supporting the notice of motion. However, due to the postal strike and running at a time of Christmas, that they were postponing it till sometime in January anyways. So I, I think for the public record here, I, you know, I just want to state that, you know, that, that's how this has kind of played itself out. Maybe it's a moot point at this point, but nonetheless, I've been assured through the resol, or sorry, through that committee meeting, that it will be postponed until January. At this point in time, unsure as to when that might be. I don't think there's been anything planned or discussed. I don't know if anybody from Planning is here, and if there's any indication as to when in January that might be. But if we're not able to speak to that this evening, that, so be it. So anyhow, I just wanted to bring that to your attention as to the confusion around the motion. And as I said, I brought it here on the 12th, wasn't able to speak to it, went to the committee meeting, was able to speak to it, and here it is again in the package, but we're not here to vote on it. But nonetheless, it's not be in, not be in the meeting until January. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor, do you want to respond? Or do you want to just wait for?
I can just comment.
Or do you want some, some other questions? What's your preference?
I can just comment.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Counsel Matar, and thank you for attending our Planning and Heritage Committee meeting. And the complexity and the rounder procedural bylaw states that a notice of motion has a process. And unfortunately, given the time constraints, here we are today really dealing with a moot point, because in, in, in reality, there was never a meeting ever scheduled. But the confusion with emails and internal memos that just, you know, stated possible dates, but really, there was never a meeting scheduled for the end of November. There was possible ideas of dates, but with that, kind of that lack of communication around that, this was, this was Counsel Matar's, you know, only avenue to bring something forward. And so, so that's why it's here this evening. And so there, there will be no Planning Board meeting or, or public hearing until after Christmas in the New Year, whether or not there's a postal strike, whether or not, all of these other things, because there was never a meeting ever scheduled. But anywho, so I just wanted to clarify that, and I do, again, thank Counsel Matar for the work he's done with his residents on this file. So, thank you.
Counsel Twill.
I was one of the councillors that sent an email asking for City Council to, to defer the public planning meeting that was, that was scheduled for last week in November. The motivation behind my email was quite simple. The impact and effect that this facility has had on the committee, on the community and the neighborhood is really no different than what was experienced on Use and Street. All that happened was, new facility was moved down the road. So having said all of that, the belief was, and I share in that belief, is that the community needed time to consult with one another, to talk with one another, to share the experiences that they've had over the last year, and not just to have one meeting in the latter part of November, and then a meeting, a Planning Board, bring, bring, you know, meeting the first week of December, and then a recommendation to City Council. Regardless of whether it was a postal strike or not, to my mind, is a moot point, because what's important is, is the consideration, the sensitivity of the community and what they've experienced. And I think when you're dealing with decisions of this magnitude, it's not just, well, we're just dealing with a planning issue. We're dealing with a resolution and a situation that, of monumental proportions, and, and what is the impact on that community and what the residents are feeling. A public planning meeting held by the city of Charlottetown, to my mind, does not do it justice. It really doesn't. not just to have one meeting in the latter part of November, and then a meeting, uh, Planning Board, uh, bring, bring, you know, meeting the first week of December, and then recommendation to City Council. Regardless of whether it was a postal strike or not, to my mind, is a moot point, because what's important is, is the consideration, the sensitivity of the community and what they've experienced. And I think when you're dealing with decisions of this magnitude, it's not just, um, well, we're just dealing with a planning issue. We're dealing with a resolution and a situation that, of monumental proportions, and, and what is the impact on that community and what the residents are feeling. A public planning meeting held by the city of Charlestown, to my mind, does not do it justice. It really doesn't. And there's a lot of misinformation. I mean, you just have to look at what's taking place, you know, on the front page of the Guardian or CBC, and the different narratives that are being played out, which I don't think is really fair. Most of the council attended that meeting, the information session that took place at the Trade Center, huge crowd, huge crowd, and there was a lot of compelling testimony that was given by the residents. So, um, you know, I appreciate the notice of motion that Counselor Matar brought forward. I think it was a useful instrument, and kudos to him, uh, for bringing that forward. I too have bring, bringing notice of motions, uh, to, to City Council. Never seemed to get a response, and some of that's something we're going to have to look at in the New Year.
Can I just wrap it up there, Counsel Twill?
Yeah, I still got another two minutes, Mr. Mayor. It's right here. I'm watching the time.
I know.
So, so, um, I really think we have to rethink how we, we deal with issues of this magnitude. For example, and I'm going to say this, you know, we, we were given a one-page, uh, one-page synopsis here at the last council meeting, the do's and don'ts. Councilors can't speak, can't represent your constituents, you got to be careful not to prejudge yourself. Yet, you have the minister, the minister goes public and says, "It's going there regardless," paraphrasing. So, we are supposed to play within the rules. We're supposed to hold back and not collaborate with the residents, yet everybody seems to be lining up behind what the province wants. And what's important, in my mind, it's what the neighborhood and what the community wants. As I said at the meeting, public policy doesn't come from the premier's office, it doesn't come from special interest groups or high-paid consultants. They come, it comes from the taxpayers, the people who have made investment in their respective communities, the people that, that have lived there for X number of years. They should determine what's, as to what takes place in their community and their respective neighborhoods. So, we've got a long way to go to, to earning the confidence of the residents in this community and the communities right across the city.
Counsel Twill.
So, uh, so, uh, Mr. Mayor-
Nineteen seconds.
I think we need, I understand nineteen seconds. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, let's be respectful. Let's, let's just be respectful.
I'm trying to, but you keep interrupting me. Don't be throwing me off my train of thought, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but don't be disrespectful.
So, so anyway, my point is, we need to rethink this whole dilemma of-
Yeah.
How we can effectively represent the residents and not be dictated from the premier's office-
Okay.
And special interest groups-
Okay.
And high-paid consultants.
Thank you.
I rest my case.
So, at the last meeting, under called order, administration provided some points of engagement, because what we're doing is that we're jeopardizing the process. So, I'm just going to ask our lawyer, when we speak like this, what does it do to the process? Katie, could you just provide some commentary?
Briefly, um, there is an obligation for councilors to be neutral.
What's that? Excuse me?
Neutrality is key right now. Yeah.
You have to keep neutrality. Correct. So, soon as you start giving your opinion, then your neutrality and your objectivity is broken. That's what we're trying to avoid here. That's exactly what we're trying to avoid. Counsel Beck.
Yeah. Um, I, I guess, uh, I was part of that committee meeting, and, uh, I think I got a little frustrated as to how it all unfolds. And I think it's around this whole notice of motion business, which is relatively new to us. And I think we have some kinks that we have to work out with it in terms of understanding how it goes. In this particular situation with Counselor Matar, and I would echo the deputy's comments in terms of the work that Counselor Matar brought to that committee, bringing his voice and speaking to it, which was crucial. But at the end of the day, the process itself, I think, we, we don't get at things like this quickly enough. And I think, I'm going to put out an appeal once again. When we're looking at our procedural bylaw, and we're looking at how notices of motions work and how they get addressed and the timelines with them, I think we have to get at them a little quicker than what they are currently outlining, because there was a drag on this. And with this process here, it required additional consultation with external stakeholders. It required a bunch of other things. The postal strike did end up playing a bit of a role in it. But I think the whole notice of motion piece of, in and of itself, is we're going forward updating our procedural bylaw, which is going to be coming up here under Counselor Matar's watch. Um, I think this is something that we have to look at to see, how can we do this in the most effective, expedient manner that we can. I agree with the process. I think we just have to adjust it, and I think we have to look at how we can make it more effective so that it can be addressed in a more prompt manner than it currently is, because I think the lines are a little blurred right now. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just going to the minutes from our meeting that took place, Madam Chair, on page 21. Moved by Mayor Brown, seconded by, by Counselor McCabe, that the Planning and Heritage Department approve that council receives this report as a response to the notice of motion brought forward. That report's not in our, in our package, but in that report, Donna's online, she wrote the report. Do you wish to her to speak to that? Donna, could you just speak to that, please? It's, if you've got the package there, it's on page 21.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, Madam Chair. That report was actually written by Laurel, and, um, Dave signed it off as the manager, so I don't know if David would want to speak to that.
No, the report isn't there.
The report is in your text.
It, what page is it on?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Okay. David, the, the report's there. We're going to thirty-five. So, there's the report. The resolution that was passed is on page 21, and it was to receive this report as a response to the notice of motion brought forward. That's what it was. So, we didn't reject it. We just approved the report. Counselor McCabe was there. Counselor Beck?
No, but that's not entirely true.
Well, no, but that's the resolution that was passed. Yeah. No, Counsel Twill's first. Counsel Twill.
Yeah. Another point that I wanted to bring up was, um, at the last City Council meeting, with respect to the minister's comments, I, I wanted to address his comments, and I was cut off by the mayor. This council has yet, this council has yet to discuss, to have the opportunity to discuss the comments made by the Minister of Housing that's responsible for the Outreach Center. We have not made an official statement as a council collectively. We have yet to discuss it. It's been a number of weeks now. Residents are asking the question, when is City Council going to discuss the, 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 uh, statements, the public statements made by the minister? What is recourse by council, and when are we going to speak collectively as a council? Because members of council, we've yet to do that. We have not. It's been a number of weeks now, and we have yet to sit down and discuss the pros and cons of what the minister said, and for us speaking collectively by resolution as a City Council. And, and really and truly, I mean, that's four, four weeks now, and the days are going by, and they're going by, and they're going by, and, and, and people are looking for City Council to, to have that discussion and to make an official statement. That hasn't happened yet.
Case, Counsel Twill sent out an email. All council, you're on it. We did have a meeting. Eleanor, can you back up? We did have a meeting with the minister, discussed some issues that included that issue. No, no, you've already spoken twice. Go back, yeah, because I'm give, I, I sent the email.
Yeah, that doesn't matter.
Yeah.
We've not discussed it.
Yeah. Well, so, so you did, you did not respond to my email, so re-
I'm not going to respond to it.
Respond to the email. Yeah, respond, respond to the email.
That wasn't before.
Counsel Matar. Again, let's, let's show respect, please. No, you're not.
Yes, I am.
Counsel Matar.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I want to go back to the motion. I, you know, you just indicated that there was no report, and, and I'm not sure, well, there's a report. And, and I did say that it was not supported, because it clearly says right in the thing that the notice of motion, the recommendation by the planning staff was that it would not stand. So, I took that as, we're not supporting this motion, to go wherever it's supposed to go to, because that was the uncertainty of where the heck this thing was supposed to go to. But regardless, the recommendation by the planning staff was, we're not going to, it's not going to stand, as, as, as I put it forward. What they were saying was, and it's just by, by luck of the fact that there's a postal strike and we ran out of time, I think that now it's Christmas, they've decided to postpone it to January. So, I want to be clear on the fact that I came there looking for, uh, a resolution to come to the floor here so that it could be voted upon by, by my peers here to decide, did they want to stand behind the residents, give them that opportunity to, um, have more time to assess, to collect their, uh, community thoughts and ideas, and how they were going to address the community meeting. Uh, and then on top of that, I will say as well, and I will say what, uh, you know, what Counselor Twill's saying, you know, as, as a council, uh, yes, you did send a, a short update as to what your meeting was with the minister. However, that still does not determine, how are we to go into this process based on, um, an uninfluenced decision that's already been made? Like, how, how are we going to do this in a way that is, are we, do we just stay the course and keep continuing, and regardless of what was said or what was done, and hope that something comes out the other end? But so that, that's all we do as a council.
We have a legislative process, and it's through planning, so.
But how is it not the reverse of, like you say, you're warning us here this evening that if we say too much, we could jeopardize the process? How is that not already jeopardized?
But the House will not vote on this. The Legislative Assembly will not vote on this.
We're being influenced. We're already told regardless of what our decisions are.
Regardless of the influence, the point is, we have a legislative process through our Planning, Development and Heritage Department. It'll go to Planning Board. Planning Board will make a recommendation to go to a public meeting. We'll go to a public meeting. That goes back to Planning Board. Planning Board makes a recommenda, so we have to follow the process.
I ignore all the comments. That's just noise out in the, out in the background, and we, we stay the course on this.
We're staying the course on it.
And that shouldn't influence anything based on any decisions-
Not influencing me. I'm, I'm going forward.
Okay. Well, I, I disagree, but-
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a couple of resolutions?
Yeah, if I could clarify something.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Um, and actually, through to Counselor Matar, an apology, because there's an error in this package. There should have been a resolution with your motion on it. So, um, the report is here, so if, if the mayor wishes, I can actually read out the resolution to be voted on tonight. If you wish to go forward with it.
It's part of the report. Correct?
It's part of the report. I, I mean, that was the, that was my goal, was to, to bring that forward on behalf of the, the residents who requested an opportunity for more time and that resolution to come here and support it for January, get it, and get it on the floor here this evening. So, if we can do that, that would be wonderful.
So, do you want to write it out, or what do you want to do?
Oh, we have it here. We'll just have to record who, uh, votes for it.
So, that'll be resolution number three. Correct? Do you have it there?
Yeah, I have it here in front, since we're on this topic, if you want to just vote on it, and then we can move on.
You want to go with that first?
Sure. Um, we will need a, um, we will need a second.
So, just a point of-
Okay, just one sec.
Just a point of clarification, then, um, um, through, through your worship to C A O Mohammed, the resolution, I'm assuming, is going to read what the recommendation says. It's not.
The resolution is Counselor Matar's motion.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, not, not the recommendation in the report.
No, because it's a notice of motion.
That's right.
So, now we're going to read his motion for council to vote on.
Yep. Perfect.
Uh, the committee recommendation and-
Yeah.
The staff report are all background.
Right. Exactly.
That's it. Your motion comes forward.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification, because I wouldn't have picked it. Because it was a not, not stand, so that's good. Right. So, it will be your notice of motion.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
That doesn't clarify it for me, but, uh, that being said, because what we voted on was the resolution that's in the package.
We didn't vote on anything.
Yeah, no, we did vote on a resolution in, in, in the committee, and that's on page, as I said.
So, your worship, um, the, the role of a committee is to make a recommendation-
Right.
To council. Sometimes it's the resolution that council votes on. Sometimes it's background information that's provided to council. They just make recommendations-
That's right.
That's what committees do. So, in a notice of motion case, you come to council and you say, "I'm giving you a notice of motion. At the next regular council meeting, I'm going to be making this motion." Between the time you give your notice, staff write a report that collects the background and your rationale for that motion, and any additional information that might be relevant to the debate that will happen at council over that motion. Then it goes, because that's the way your procedural bylaw is written, which slows things down, it goes through to committee. And the committee gets to review what that motion is going to be. They may have more to add to the debate or not. Uh, they may agree with what staff says towards the motion or not, and then it comes forward to council, where council ultimately has the vote on the motion that you provided notice for.
Yeah.
So, what should have been in your package tonight was a resolution with a mover and a, a second, and then we would have read it out like we normally do for resolutions.
No, just one sec. Counsel Beck? He's got the-
Yeah, see, this is rehashing.
All right, yeah, this, this, this is not what we discussed at committee.
No, I know. It's not.
No, it's not.
That's why I, that's why I was, that's why I was slightly perturbed at committee, because the, what came forth from Donna and Laurel, Laurel presented the case, and she said, basically, "We're postponing the meeting. So, really, we're not really going, we should, let's kind of almost disregard the motion, the notice of motion." But Counselor Matar wanted to have it as record that we are actually in support of postponing the motion. Then what we ended up agreeing to was, we received this as information. We never voted on anything. So, we ended up, we went through whole, this whole process, and really accomplished, in my mind, nothing. So, that's why I think we have to get some clarification as to what we're doing with regards to these notice motions. We tied up a bunch of committee meeting time, we're tying up a bunch of time here tonight, in, in discussing something. And now we're, and now all of a sudden, we're being thrown a motion at the last minute to say, "Well, let's go vote on a motion that hasn't even gone through, hasn't even gone through a committee."
Yeah.
So, we're, we're, we're throwing things, throwing a dart and see where it lands. I don't like that.
No, I, I prefer to let the-
Anyway, so, that's why I say, that's why I say, I'm sorry, but this is, we, we got to get this stuff cleared out.
Yeah. I, I prefer to lead that motion, because that, that has to have background or it, and I know it's in the report, but the resolution that I voted on, at, yeah, we did vote on it. We voted at a committee.
No, we didn't.
Well, it says carried. It's right, right there, page 19.
We, we, your worship, we voted to receive, we agreed to receive the report as information.
Right.
That's what we agreed.
That's, that's right here. It's right in the-
There was no, there was no vote. There was nothing, no resolution.
It was moved by me and seconded by Counsel Beck. That's a motion. That's why it's confusing for me, what we're doing right now. C A O.
Thank you, your worship. So, this, this was explained at the committee, and where I believe the committee ended up in the end, where they said, "Well, we're just going to send this to council." Because the motion, what was explained in the committee, is regardless of what the committee recommends or not, or what staff recommend or not, a counselor who has a make, makes a notice of motion has the right for that motion to be heard by council. It is only going through the committees, because that's the way your procedural bylaw is written right now, that it has to go through committee. What you need is a staff background report, which you have, and quite frankly, it doesn't matter what the staff report says. Uh, they're there to advise, not to tell you whether your motion matters or not, or is relevant or not. It's to provide background information and recommendation. But ultimately, it's council who gives that motion standing or not. So, that, that was the process. There was a fulsome discussion around the report and the events surrounding this, and unplanned events, mail strikes, and all sorts of different things. Um, but ultimately, as was explained at the meeting, that motion comes forward no matter what. And it did go through committee, and that's the process of a notice of motion. That's, that's what's outlined in your procedural bylaw right now.
Counsel Bernard. Councilor Bernard.
Wow. Anyway, um, the meeting is, is booked for the end of January sometime, is it that you're looking at for this or you're going to be?
So I can let everyone know this evening, there is no public hearing to date booked for any items from the Planning and Heritage Department as of yet. There's no meetings. There's, there was never a meeting in November. There was an intimation of possible dates, but at that time, they were still looking for locations, they were still looking at whether or not they had time to get the report ready. There was never a meeting planned. There was intimation of possible dates, but never happened. But as I said earlier, Councilor Matar had only one thing he could do to ensure that this possible date didn't come to fruition, and that was a notice of motion. Procedural bylaw unfortunately makes this process very slow. So by the time it got to our Planning and Heritage Committee, it was confirmed then there, there was no meeting. There was lots of other reasons why and a lot of confusion at our Planning and Heritage Committee meeting as well about staff recommendation and not, but with a notice of motion, we're not looking for a staff recommendation, we're looking for staff information. And so what reg, what they recommended was that council receives the report as a response to the notice of motion brought forward on November the 12th. So out of respect to Councilor Matar, we should hear his notice of motion, support his notice of motion and move on.
I guess I was gonna say was the earliest we can have it is in January anyway. So you're looking at January to have the meeting, which is what he was asking for. And as far as whatever said in the legislature in the media, regardless, it's a land process, a land plant, land use planning application that we have to follow the process anyway. So that's, that is just noise. We have a process to follow. It's gonna be scheduled sometime in January or even February, so.
Councilor Bernard.
Last time, thank you, thank you, uh, Councilor Deputy Yankoff. I appreciate you supporting that. To the C A O, if the procedure is that we have a resolution on the floor tonight, let's read the resolution, see where it falls and be done with it. It'll be January before we decide what we're doing.
Well, I think, okay, we should read the resolution. I think we know where it's gonna fall. We're gonna pass it.
Let's go through, let's go through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Read the resolution. This is new to me.
Thank you. We'll be sure to get it signed.
We'll have to get it signed after. Moved by who?
Moved by Councilor Matar, seconded by Councilor Duran. Be it resolved that City Council postpone a public consultation meeting, which was approved by council on October 10th, 2025, until late January 2025 regarding the amendment of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan in respect to the Comprehensive Planning Area Two, former government garage site, and to amend section 3.5A of the official plan. Eastern Gateway Waterfront and to amend Appendix B Comprehensive Development Area, Parcels and permitted uses of the Zoning and Development Bylaw to permit a community outreach center and an emergency transition shelter for the property located at 15 Park Street, P I D 365593. This postponement would allow sufficient opportunity for the public and stakeholders to prepare and be involved in a comprehensive consultation process.
Okay. Questions called? Okay, questions called? Hold on. Okay, it's open. I, the question was called, so we'll hold it up for, can you just give my mic there, please? Go ahead, dear.
The question I have is, when you look at the resolution that was passed last year, which was for temporary.
No, no, but, no, but, no. We're not, we're talking, no, this is the resolution. Please stick to it. Our lawyer has already said, we have to remain neutral, we have to remain objective. Stay with the resolution that's on the floor. The resolution on the floor was read. Please sit down, let's vote. Okay, time to vote. You can press your button, yea or nay. All done, all in? Ten zero. Okay, so we're moving on to the next resolution. Okay, just one sec.
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that pursuant to the provisions of the Municipal Government Act and section three of the City of Charlottetown Secondary and Garden Suites Registration Bylaw with respect to the registration of secondary and garden suites, council hereby appoints Melissa Kitson as the registrar and Jason Doucette, Laurel Palmer, Michael Fraser and Stephanie McDonald as designate registrars to administer provisions of the Secondary and Garden Suites Registration Bylaw, P H dash S S B, uh, point one, and that this designation of authority shall cease if the job duties of these employees no longer require the designation, if any of these employees terminate employment with the City of Charlottetown or upon further written notice.
Questions called? Okay, it's open to vote. Please cast your vote. Close. Ten zero. Okay, do you want to go to the next one, Madam Chair? Or Madam C A O?
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be it resolved that council reaffirms its commitment to proceed with initiative eight of the signed Housing Accelerator Fund Agreement, which involves incorporating four units as of right, as appropriate, into its development policies and regulations once adequate public consultation and design requirements have been completed to ensure proper implementation within the City of Charlottetown, and that council directs administration to formally request an extension of the timeline related to initiative eight.
Thank you, worship. So I just want clarity on this because we've, we've talked about this different times before and we've talked about, um, getting the, the vacant lots as appropriate and then we find out, well, that's just kind of like flood zones and stuff like that. So, um, there was eight requirements, this was the only one that we had some trouble with. And I guess what I want clarity on is, is, um, it wants to have four units as a right as appropriate into its development policies and regulations once adequate public consultation and design requirements have been completed. So why is this resolution even here? I wonder, what are we asking here? Because we're going to be going to public consultation and we're going to be, I always understood we were going to be talking about this particular issue among the others. And so I'm wondering why this is a resolution basically saying, I, I guess what I'm afraid of is we're, we're agreeing here tonight that we agree with four units as a right in any vacant lot within the City of Charlottetown. And I'm wondering why we have to have a resolution on this. We can't go to public consultation first.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Bernard, and, um, I believe you're correct. Really, the only part of this resolution that's relevant for this evening is the last sentence, which is, council directs administration to formally request an extension of the time red, timeline related to the eight initiatives. I could easily say that we could have a friendly amendment and remove the top part because we're not, it's a moot point once again, because all of these eight initiatives are going to be incorporated into discussions around the changes to our zoning and development bylaw, every one of them. And so really, the only thing that council needs to decide tonight is to direct administration to formally request an extension of the timeline related to the, to the, to initiative eight. And it's because we, staff just haven't, haven't had enough time. So the idea is we want to incorporate this initiative into the changes that we make in 2025 to our zoning and development bylaw. So unless administration can tell us otherwise, why we have to include that caveat, um, then I say that we just make the resolution the bottom part.
And I'll second that. I want to make that motion, I'll second it.
C A O or Donna, you're online there.
Thank you, worship, and through the deputy mayor. Actually, the resolution is intentionally written, um, how it is simply because that's how we've been instructed to do that in requesting the extension. Um, there was a, um, a request for a recommitment to that aspect of our letter. It's still the same as what we initially committed to in our letter, four units as of right, as appropriate. And there's also recognition in that letter as well that there is a public process to go through for this and, uh, that will be decided, um, at that time. So that, that is why the resolution is written how it's written, so we can actually send that back through to C M H C in asking for the extension.
And that these will be the eight initiatives that will be discussed at a public consultation, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Doesn't mean it's, it's accepted. It means these are the, on page 25, correct? You have the eight initiatives that will be discussed publicly. Councilor Bernard, this is your second time.
Yeah, okay, no, that's fine. Just that when this was brought up before and we talked about this last month, it was, well, we already agreed to all eight. Why we haven't discussed it? No, no, we never, but we passed the resolution.
Yeah.
Because there was all, all the money that was offered up first. And I, I guess for me, pointing out this particular one, this is the only one that's causing this trouble out of the eight. And what we're told, what we're told in the past was government may have, have issues with that funding. So, you know, I, I definitely agree with, with the, the planning chair. I mean, if, if we're, if we're directing administration to formally request an extension of the timeline related to the initiative eight, let's, let's do that. Let's ask, let's, let's make the, make the amendment in the, in the resolution and ask for that.
So if you look at the report, I quote, "The city signed an agreement, C A, C M H A C, initiative eight, focused on removing exclusionary zoning and promoting the higher density developments. This includes allowing up to four units on properties where appropriate and enabling four-story buildings within 800 meters of critical locations such as U P E I campus, Holland College and the Queen Elizabeth Hospital." Is the 88 acres for the experimental farm? Is that?
Yeah.
Within the 800 meters of the critical locations? Does, is that, was that in 800 meters? Experimental farm property?
Do you want an answer?
Yeah.
Okay, the deputy's gonna answer.
Thank you. And, um, your worship through to, um, Councilor Twill, um, there's an, there is an extensive, um, um, part in the report that speaks to that the, um, in the clarification that the experimental farm is absolutely 100% not included, even though it's within 800 meters. It has, it has, it is not part of any, um, discussion around, um, any of these initiatives that we're discussing for many reasons outlined in there. One, of course, that it's crown land, two, that we'd have to go through duty consult, three, that it's just not included in that because it's parkland. So you'll see that in there, that, that there is absolutely no discussion about any development through the City of Charlottetown for the experimental farm. And if, if anyone wants to add to that, your worship or C A O Mohammed.
Councilor Twill, your second question.
Well, that may be, what really struck me was CBC ran a story back a number of months ago and, uh, when this first come out about this incentive program and monies being offered by the federal government, the member of parliament did an interview with respect to the experimental farm, farm property and talked about, yes, it's always being discussed and development and, and the city talked about it as well. Uh, so I think, the thing that really troubles me is that, you know, we're saying, no, 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 but yet we have elected officials, uh, at, at all levels of government, well, two levels of government, talking about, uh, development on the experimental farm. So the question becomes, why was discussions taking place on the experimental farm property when we're going to great lengths now to say that the experimental farm property is not included? What, what, why were those interviews? Why, why was CBC doing interviews with elected officials at, at different levels of government talking about development of the experimental farm property? And yet now we're saying, after I keep forcing the issue, saying that the experimental farm is not included? Like, where's, why is there a miscommunication or misconception or, or disinformation? Why is this allowed to happen? And why was there not a correction at that time?
Councilor Kate.
Why is that?
Thank you. And I know Councilor Twill is passionate about the experimental farm and the development of that land, but right now, we're talking about initiative aid extension. That's in the next report.
Yeah.
So that, the experimental farm wasn't part of this resolution or report, Councilor Twill. It's part of the next one. So let's just finish this resolution and then answer your question.
And again, these eight initiatives will be part of the public discussion when we go to a public consultation. That's the purpose of, I think, if you look at the resolution there, it's just, it says reaffirm its commitment to proceed. I think there was some concern from the federal government or the Minister of, Federal Minister of Housing that some of the, some of the communities are waving on this. This is just to bring it to a public discussion at a public consultation. Councilor Bernard, your second time? Okay.
But it, but it doesn't say that, your worship, and I, I think, um, Councilor Yankoff, I agree, I would agree with what Councilor Yankoff says and she wants to move an amendment to it. I think this resolution is looking for administration to request an extension of the timeline related to initiative eight because we're not meeting the timelines that they requested. So if we already have those eight in the other resolution we passed, we don't need it in this one. So.
Okay, deputy, do you want to amend that and get, we'll vote on the amendment? As you already, so you're saying just the last part, the council?
Yeah, I mean, unless there's an, unless there is some legal or administrative reason that we have to include it, I know that C A O Mohammed has asked us and explained that to us, that this, um, request came down through C M H C. But if we already confirm the aid initiatives, whether we reconfirm or not this evening, the point is that all aid initiatives still have a process to go through, in particular through our official plan and our zoning and development bylaw. So, um, you know, unless, unless there's a reason that we have to include that part, if we can just, you know, because we've already confirmed that through a public, public resolution, these eight initiatives, why can't we just say, the council directs administration to formally request an extension of the timelines related to initiative eight? Because that's really all we're doing is, and that in itself reconfirms that we're still on the table for initiative eight.
C A O?
Thank you, worship. So, um, the timeline in the initiative eight is the zoning and development bylaw. So they're looking for a commitment that you will move forward in the four units as of right, as appropriate, as you go through the zoning and development bylaw process. That's what they're looking for. Specifically because they've asked for this information and commit from, commitment from council, if you remove this out of here and we send it through, um, we will not have provided what they were looking for in order to give us the extension. So we may find ourselves back here again asking you for this. So that's, that's why it was written how it's written.
Okay, deputy?
Perhaps C M H C is not familiar with the municipal process, which would be, we've already passed a resolution. So in order to pass a resolution, again, we'd have to rescind the last one and start another one, wouldn't we? Because we've already had a resolution saying yes to initiative eight? I don't, it just, yeah, I mean, because we're just looking for the extension. But the extension is the timeline, not the commitment to initiative eight, because we've already passed that part of the resolution. The extension is the brand new part, from my understanding. I'm not, I'm not, um, taking away from what C A O Mohammed has said, that perhaps they're, they're looking for a re, a recommitment, but we've never intugated that we didn't commit to it because it's already in a resolution. So it's not like we rescinded a resolution and now, well, in order to have this extension, we need a new resolution.
Why don't we just broaden the scope? Can we just provide, get a legal opinion here so that we're not trapped into something? Do you want it, Katie?
No, no problem.
Could you turn your mic on? Could you turn your mic on? Yep, Tom.
Okay. So looking at the resolution, the first piece of it is that you're reaffirming your commitment, right? So there's nothing new in the first aspect of it. The only new piece is the extension request. There's also lots of qualifying language in there, you know, four units as appropriate, you know, design requirements have been to ensure public, you know, proper consultation and things like that. So the reaffirming language is important. You're just, you're reaffirming what you've already committed to. The only new aspect is that very last sentence. I hope that helps.
If I may, your worship?
Yes, Donna, can you please interject?
Another aspect, so through Counsel Bernard and through you, Madam Chair, another aspect of this ask was that the Initiative Eight be tied to our Initiative Two, which is centered around ADU, so accessory dwelling units, and how the design component will then factor into the update of the zoning and development bylaw. And that's why it's written in that way. Also, this initiative was supposed to be completed long ago and we had to extend it. And the, the pitch that we used to get CMHC or the Minister to even consider or request was to add it to our Initiative Two, which is centered around ADUs. And this is definitely a requirement in the way it is written, that they even consider having further discussions with us to facilitate the extension. So it's definitely a requirement at the moment.
So a requirement means the full resolution, the council reaffirms?
The full resolution.
Yes. Okay, Counsel Bernard, you've already spoken twice. I, I have to be fair, because Counsel Twill, same thing. Deputy, you want to wrap it up?
Yeah.
No, you, you, Counsel Twill, you already went twice. You did, you went twice. Yes, you did.
So that being said, if, if that is the correct information, then I will rescind the friendly amendment and we can leave the resolution as stand. But I will just remind us folks that if we are reaffirming and reconfirming this, that just remember that there's still the same thing we've confirmed in our first resolution. We haven't made any more decisions than we already made, is that we are willing to bring this through process, through our zoning and development bylaw, through public hearing, back to planning staff, back to planning board, and back to council for final decision. So if CMHC needs us to reaffirm this in order for us to proceed with an extension, then I say we can go ahead and do that. But just remember, folks, we're not making any further decision than we already made many months ago on this.
Okay. Well, it, it, this was a request. Anyways, this, again, I know that Counsel Draun is just saying, everybody should play with the rules, and it says, please cast your vote, please cast your vote. Good, all in? Okay, A2, Bernard and Twill against. Okay, just one second. Except, it's going good. Okay, that's the report?
Yeah.
Oh, nothing else? Okay.
Okay.
Hey, Chair, Counsel Beck.
I do have to go.
Splitsies.
All right, the Human Resource Committee met on December 3rd, and the minutes of this meeting are included in your package. There is one resolution for council's consideration and one resolution anticipating during the closed session of the regular meeting. Any questions? I will do my best to answer them.
Don't worry, the resolution. And it's on page 50.
Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor McKinnon. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown accepts the proposed 2% increase to management non-union salaries effective January 1st, 2025.
Question's called. Please cast your vote. Should be an easy one. All my chips are in. 10-0. Okay. Is that it there, Counsel Rams? Counselor Beck? That's it?
Okay.
Protective and Emergency Services Counsel Julie McCabe. Thank you.
Thanks, your worship. So the Protective and Emergency Services Committee met on the 25th of November. The minutes are included in your package. We would like to express condolences to Grant Crockett's family this evening. Grant passed away yesterday. He served as a career fireman for many years at Station One, so we just want to let the family know that we're thinking of them. I also have two resolutions for your consideration this evening. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Okay. Deputy Marienka?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to, it's in your new business and your minutes, and I just wanted to recognize and thank you for bringing forward my notice of motion from a year and, and some ago around the police services and the public community plan and the addressing the illicit drug use related to illegal behavior to help residents, et cetera. So I thank you for bringing that forward again, and I look forward to where that goes. The other thing I would want to just mention is, I'm not able to share with you yet the conference package from the Canadian Center on Substance Use and Addictions, because I haven't yet received it. But as soon as I do, it will be circulated to council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Beck. Oh, just one second, just let me put you up. Go right ahead.
Thank you, because I'm going to forget all these discussions. Could you do me a favor, please, with your notice of motion? And please just send another email to Chief and include me so that I could be a little clearer on exactly what you were looking for in that notice of motion. I think there was some question, it was put forward a long time ago, about the clarity of what exactly you were wanting. If I was correct in that, is that correct, Chief? Did you want some clarity around exactly what the notice of motion was looking for? I think we had some discussion on that.
Thank you, worship, through the Chair, Counsel Yankoff. Yeah, certainly the, they're complex issues and, and we've did a lot over the time since the first request was tabled by the Counselor. And certainly, but we, we want to meet the expectation of what, you know, we're hearing from the community, because I'm assuming that, that voice is coming from the community and they want to know a little more about that and what our initiatives are and how we're approaching some of these challenging issues. So we'll certainly be in communication to try to narrow the focus of it, because it is very complex in nature.
Counsel Beck?
Yeah, thank you for your part, Counsel McCabe. I just have a question about page 57, some of the abandoned buildings. I do know that some of these units were put, given hazardous compliance orders. I believe it was October 2023. And I'm just wondering if we could get a, because there's an 18-month window in there, right? From the issuance of the hazardous compliance order? And I'm just wondering if we could get a clarification on when those hazardous compliance orders were issued? I know some of these properties it would apply to. I think number one, number four, and number six for sure. And my second question is, my understanding is on, on property number six, because I've been getting a lot of questions about this myself. And that my understanding is that we were awaiting a demolition permit about six months ago for that property. And I'm just wondering if there's any update on that property in particular. So maybe a couple of updates on when the hazardous compliance orders started and when they would be completed and clarification on property number six here. Thank you.
Counsel Kate?
I know on page, we did have discussion on some of that, and a lot of these are still in progress, is how it was reported to us, based on, on the 18-month window for when these were. As far as the demolition, from what I understand, there was someone hired to take down the building on Chestnut Street. Something fell through. I don't know if you have, do you have the updated information on, on those questions tonight?
Your worship, to the Chair, you're correct about the, the property mentioned there. There was some issues over contractor, but we will have the bylaw officer follow up to see the current status and report the next committee meeting. We could also report on the, the different stages after the, the, the compliance orders are, are issued. They can go through a stage where some work is being done. We will get updates on those properties.
What I can, what I can say, Counsel, on their committee, was discussed that these houses are considered secure as far as safety, what they, when they make sure that there's no access and so in the process of where the next steps are, but that we were told they've been secured, they're not considered dangerous.
Counsel Twill?
Yeah. Just a couple of points. I filed a notice of motion as well. I don't know where that notice of motion is, whether it was discussed by the Protective Services Committee. I filed that about two or three months ago. Notice of motion centered around crime-free, drug-free neighborhoods and communities. Don't know where that's at in the queue, whether that's been discussed or not. You know, you file notice of motions and you just seem to be chasing, chasing, like you're chasing the game, and not just in this particular case, but other cases as well. So I'm not sure why that notice of motion wasn't discussed at the Protective Services Committee, but I certainly look forward to that discussion taking place. My second, my second question is, is to our Fire Chief, and that is regarding the Fire Underwriters Report. Will that report be coming to City Council? The unedited version, will that be coming to council? I know there's a lot of, you know, a lot, a lot of concern as to where we're going with the, the next fire station in West Royalty, particularly with the growth and development that's taking place in West Royalty. Residents, members of council, including myself, are waiting for, you know, the results of, of that, that report, and I'm looking forward to, to reading that report. Can you give me a timeline and timeframe when that report will be coming forward to all members of City Council?
Okay, Counsel Twill, that goes to the Chair. That question goes to the Chair. The Chair needs to go to the Chief. She'll ask, so please ask the questions to the Chair.
I know, he was asking me. Because I've been Chair for a month, so I, you know, I have all this information that I'm able to address. So it is going to go back to them. But I think that the notice of motion thing, again, again, I've been Chair for a month. We did not discuss your notice of motion at the last meeting. So the notice of motion obviously is there. CAO, can you just help me? There's so much discussion tonight on notice of motions. Like, I know because of our procedural bylaw, it has to come through committee, but the end game is when a notice of motion is put forward, you're wanting to give staff an opportunity to prepare, but then it comes back to council for discussion. Is that, is that not what it is? Like, I don't even know, he wants to have a discussion on drug use and what else to just say, whatever.
It's drug use, crime-free neighborhoods and communities, and basically what I said in my notice of motion, it's a human right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
And I think it kind of ties into similarity what Deputy Mayor's notice of motion is. It all ties together. So whether we have opportunity for further discussion, and I think maybe you could present, or we could have an opportunity for the Chief to come in and talk to all of us, so there could be discussion around the notices of motion. But it would have to be dealt with here as a notice of motion, is what I'm saying, I think, unless I'm wrong.
Do you want to deal with the Fire Underwriters' study? Are you doing it?
Address the question about the fire station.
Fire Chief Tim Mamie.
Thank you, worship. Through CAO, your worship to Counselor Twill. The Fire Underwriters, we discussed at our last committee meeting in the closed session, and I reviewed all of the recommendations with committee. The next step is to allow staff the time to prepare reports to support and/or explain those recommendations in full and bring them back to committee in the new year. And at that time, when we get our approved draft back, we're currently working on a second draft from the underwriters, so we're still confirming accuracy of everything in there. Once we have the recommendation reports built out, and we'll be bringing that back to committee in the closed session, and then once confirmed there, we'll be able to take that to the open session.
Counsel Beck?
Did you want to respond?
No, 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 Counsel, just, no, no, Counsel Beck, let's just keep the flow going. That's.
I'll be quick. Yeah, I understand about the properties being secured, but my understanding is the buildings have to either be restored or demolished at the end of the time. And what I'm looking for is I want to get the, the timeline so that we're all aware of where we are with these things. It's one thing to say the file's active, that's fine and dandy, but I know that we're coming to the end of some of those properties on the issuance of the hazardous compliance order, so that's what I'm, that's what I would like to have brought forward for everybody. Thanks.
Counsel Twill, second time.
Thank you. My question is back to the Fire Chief. So anticipation of, of the recommendations, you know, you're writing a second draft, as I understand it? No, not a second draft, but you're, you're formulated a bunch of recommendations that shared with the committee. I'm looking for a timeline of, again, what the expectation can be for the community, particularly in the northern part of the city, as to when a new fire station can be, can be built. I mean, this has been going on for a number of years. The, the development that's taking place in West Royalty is, is, is incredible. It seems like every month, we're, we're asked to vote on a resolution for more development in West Royalty, and just looking forward to a state-of-the-air facility for the folks in West Royalty. And I guess I'm looking for, just to break down, I guess, timelines as to when we can actually vote on a new fire station, based on the recommendations from the underwriters. So I wonder if you could help me with that?
Again, it was through the Counsel McCabe. Do you wish to take it or you want to pass it on to, allow that?
I think that's a pretty specific question for our, but I appreciate that you follow coming through me, so I'm going to allow Chief Mamie the response.
Fire Chief?
Your worship, through the CAO, through your worship to Counselor Twill again, and the Chair. Yes, with the Underwriters' Report, the recommendations were discussed in the closed session. At this time, what staff is doing is taking all of those recommendations and assessing them and developing a, a report so that we can come forward with a full, full backed, with background history on each one of the recommendations and how that can improve the fire service we're providing to the citizens. In part and parcel of that is all of the, the growth in the city, east, west, north and south have been reviewed. The official plan information has been taken in, and the Underwriters' Report assesses all of that, and the recommendations are in and around what's required from the city in regards to stations and personnel and everything else in there. So when the recommendations are fully developed by staff and brought forward at the, I assume, or I anticipate a February committee meeting to bring those recommendations forward with, with them background. And at that point, after discussion, we'll be able to bring those forward for the full committee, or, sorry, full council.
Okay. Couple of resolutions?
Can we go back to committee on that? I had asked for clarification, because both of the notice of motions are pretty, pretty broad spectrum, as we've heard, so I'm not really sure. I just want to make sure I'm doing my due diligence. Like, Counsel Twill wants a drug-free city. Well, that's, we all want a drug-free city, but I'm not sure with the notice of motion, what you're wanting from us for discussion at some point. So I just, I'm trying to understand the process.
CAO? CAO, do you want to provide some enlightenment?
Thank you, your worship. So the deputy mayor's notice of motion specifically had to do with the police coming up with a plan, a community plan. So that came through Protective and Emergency Services Committee. Now, I have to go back and revisit what this other notice of motion was, but I think it might be, and councillor Beck's actually just stepped out, I think it went to strategic priorities. And the rationale for going to strategic priorities over Protective and Emergency Services is because strategic priorities focuses on larger picture items like this of creating new bylaws. So that's where it went. Now, what I'm not sure of, and I want to go back and check, is what happened at that committee and why it didn't come forward. Thank you.
Deputy mayor, second time.
Yep, thank you. It's my understanding that notices of motion, and I think we just had a big discussion about that, come back to council regardless. So somewhere that's lost in the ether, because regardless, your notice of motion, whether or not it was not recommended by committee or not, it still should. As for mine, I respect and realize that the protective and police services have been doing much work behind the scenes. And I think the part of the notice of motion, that when you're wondering for clarification, it's for, it's for the engagement and the, and the information to be disseminated to the residents, because although we know that they're doing lots of work, I'm looking for that part of that notice of motion that speaks to informing the public of my notice of motion. What are we doing? How are we doing it? What's the plan? You know, what can be shared with the public? So, hope that helps.
Councillor Beck.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, just on the, to, on the list of abandoned vacant buildings within the city of Charlottetown. I know 31 Kirkwood Drive, the short time I've been on council, understand this, this address has had quite a history with, I believe, public works involvement or whatever over the years. And I know, just probably not unlike other people, driving by at time to time, it doesn't seem to be, looks in much the same shape as it did, I guess, whatever, two years ago, perhaps. So the fact that, you know, that it's still active, is there, is there anything different or more recent on that particular address? Can anybody give me an update on that?
That motion's coming up, councillor Beck, but she can.
What I will tell you again, on those breakdowns for those specific properties, I think we just need to go back and I, we need to get just a little bit clearer picture of what, where exactly they are in the process. That's been asked for tonight by councillor Beck. You've asked, I have it now, and it'll come off to Chief McGonals, so that he'll be prepared to have that information. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to read that first resolution that covers 31?
Moved by councillor McCabe, seconded by councillor Duran. Be it resolved that the public works manager be authorized, public works acting manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage, and other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of the same at the owner's expense at the following properties in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlottetown, and that the pictures were taken of the noted properties listed below without satisfactory action being taken to resolve the issue by the respective property owner. 20 Beach Street, PID 790204, warning posted on November 8, 2024. 305 Houston Street, PID 364083, warning posted on October 30, 2024. 25 Alley Street, PID 359430, warning posted on October 9, 2024. 147 Beach Grove Road, PID 746511, warning posted on October 3, 2024. 214 Door Chester Street, PID 357485, warning posted on October 2, 2024.
Question's called. It's open. Please cast your vote. All in. 10-0. Do you want to go to the next one?
Moved by councillor McCabe, seconded by councillor Duran. Be it resolved that the acting public works manager be authorized to remove two derelict vehicles as determined by definition and in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw at the owner's expense on the property located at 62 Highland Avenue, PID 354985, warning posted on October 22, 2024. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken.
Councillor Beck. Can you just open his mic? Grace? Yep. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I'm just wondering if or when this gets approved. What are the timelines for removal after the order is made? Thank you.
I'd have to go into our exact policy on the unsightly. I think they told us it was similar to, to the other process that we follow with unsightly, what we just voted on. It's just that one was a car and one is property, so we had to have two separate resolutions. So I think there, it's usually like you get notice and then you get two weeks or a month. Do you know exactly, chief, how many in our policy, how long the process is on these unsightly properties or unsightly vehicles?
He did.
Your worship, through the chair, through councillor Beck, are we speaking about the vehicles removal? Is that particularly what you're looking for? That would be pretty much right away. Yeah, yeah.
No, they have to warn you.
Yeah, that's what I mean. There's a warning and then they get it.
Okay. Open. Tomorrow morning. Yes?
So is that executed, sorry, is that executed by the public works department? Do we take care of that and then they?
And then bill them.
And then bill that.
Yeah. Okay. Open. Please cast your vote. Please cast your vote. Your vote. All in. Close. Oh, some people didn't vote, so I reject that. Ready to vote, you'll have to vote again. I'm getting pretty good at this. No? Just one second, no, hold on. Please cast your vote. Should be good now. Close. 10-0. Okay. Parks, that's good, councillor McCabe. Thank you, chiefs. Thank you very much. Parks, recreation, leisure activities. Councillor Twill and Frank Quinn.
Members of council, the report is in your package. We have a resolution for council's consideration this evening. Just a couple of highlights. The shoreline reinstatement is continuing to take place down Victoria Park. I believe the anticipated date upon completion will be towards the latter part of December, all things being equal. And of course, Christmas came early this year to the city of Charlottetown with the opening of the new Simmons Arena in North River Road. And. Not sure who that was. But nonetheless, I can tell you that the reviews has been very enthusiastic, a lot of excitement, speaks volumes to the planning that went into this facility. And some of the quotes that residents have indicated to me exceeded our greatest expectations. What a beautiful facility. One of the nicest facilities in all of Canada. And I think it's something that all members of this council can be extremely proud of. The walking track on the second floor has received great reviews. For example, yesterday morning, there were at least six people there at 6 o'clock in the morning, walking on the, walking on the walking track. So it's just a fantastic facility. It certainly sets the stage for more community facilities of this magnitude to be built in our city. The bar has been raised, the benchmark has been set high, and we want to certainly meet the same, the same merits of that particular facility. It's certainly in the right location, and all user groups are very, 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 very happy with what is taking place. And I also want you to know that residents from all demographics are able to utilize this facility. We're still waiting, I know our manager's working on the canteen facility and the kitchen facilities. The community room is fantastic. I think it seats about 100, 125 as well. So it truly is a community facility. And I can't thank our senior management enough for all the work and the due diligence they've done thus far. So if there's any questions in the report or any questions that you have, I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Twill. Councillor Beck.
No question, just a comment. I would like to echo the, his worship's expression of gratitude for the walkway that goes between Terry Fox Drive and Brayton Road. It's been an area that has been traipsed upon quite dangerously at four seasons of the year. So it's nice to have the nice boardwalk there. I've heard lots of people have, again, remarked to me, as they have with Simmons, that they're thankful that it's there. So I'm just happy that it got done, and thank you for the work that was done in it.
It was a good unofficial kickoff there, councillor Twill, last week, and the response has been totally positive. Laurie Devine and our neighbor Joanne Thompson went for a walk and stayed for 90 minutes, even stopped into the warm room. Councillor Twill.
Well, again, I'll just reiterate, the feedback has been just incredibly enormous. People are very, very pleased. And I think the most significant thing is that the city of Charlottetown constructed, planned a facility, and they got it right. That's what's so important. And, you know, you mentioned Laurie and Joanne, both live on Spring Park Road. I mean, Jean Wanacott and her friends practically there every night, using the facility. It's just a great facility always round. And again, I'll reiterate, it's a benchmark that's been laid out, and we want to continue along that same, that same, that same, that same standard. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Twill. We got a resolution? One resolution?
Moved by councillor Twill, seconded by councillor Bernard. Be it resolved that as per the recent request for quotations for snow clearing of municipal properties, the city of Charlottetown accepts the low bid from PD Construction Limited for the Cody Banks Arena for $6,500 plus applicable taxes, and the low bid from Dickerson's Snow Removal for Simmons Sports Center for $7,000 plus applicable taxes, subject to receipt of required insurance certificates. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Questions called by councillor Ramsey. Please cast your vote. Good close. Okay. 10-0. And councillor Twill, just before we close, is, is the facility open at 5:30 in the morning till 11:00 in the evening, Simmons? I've been asked, and, is that correct?
There's a question.
Well, can you answer that?
Well, yeah, sure. Give it a shot. Correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, but our staff are there at 5:00, 5:00 in the morning. They open the facility, residents are permitted. We're looking at 5:30, 6 o'clock, and then approximately 10:30, I think it's the last games are being held. I stand to be corrected, but I will turn it over to our manager, Frank Quinn. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So your worship through to the chair. So we're actually still working that, we're saying 6 o'clock right now because the staff could be busy out back, kind of thing. So we're saying 6 o'clock and in the range of 11. Once we have it finalized, we're working out the, those sort of operational items. And once we've finalized, we'll be sending out an official notice on the walking track, community room, everything else that's in the facility, so.
Thank you kindly. Councillor Beck.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Twill. Again, kudos on Simmons and Frank and your team and the whole group, like just the stress of the, the stress of the problem was, wasn't, wasn't a whole lot of fun. But anyway, it turned out, you know, the, the folks got it fixed in record time. No, I just wanted to make a comment. I listened to your committee meeting, councillor Twill, and the presentation there on the buckets and borders and the basketball, basketball PDI was an exciting possibility for maybe, you know, I don't know where that'll go, but is it related to the, the pit on Macaulay Park? Yeah, yeah. Anyway, interesting, and be interesting to see where that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we move on to, oh, councillor Bernard, you were in there. Sorry, councillor Bernard, missed you there. Go ahead, sir.
Just a quick question. Has to do with the opening at 6 o'clock. I thought the first ice rink was at 6:00 a.m. So if, if that's the case, we'd need somebody to open the rink earlier than that, I would think, for practice time.
Councillor Twill, is it okay? Yes, sir, okay.
So, so your worship through to, through to councillor Bernard. So we're just saying right now officially 6 o'clock. There could be a time that maybe the ice is not booked right at 6:00. So until we work out all the kinks and all that, and we're sort of wanting to make sure we have the necessary staff in the building as well to supervise, we're, we're still working out some of those items. So we're saying now, we don't want someone to come there at 5:30 and the building's not open. So we're saying 6 o'clock to be safe. If you're that keen, that's great, but, and then we're saying at the end of the day, we're saying it's around 11:00 is what we're figuring right now. But once we have those times exactly set, we'll be putting those on our website and letting the public know.
And councillor Twill, it's all more about the walking track? That's what people are asking about. It's not about the skating, it's used in walking track? Okay. Yes, sir. No information?
Well, no, just a clarification. It's not so much new information, but a lot of residents are asking if the walking track is free, so I'm hoping our friends in the media here will just reiterate that one more time. It is free, open for all demographics, all citizens of Charlottetown, and certainly look forward to seeing them there. Thank you.
Free. Thank you very much, councillor Twill. Water and wastewater utility. Councillor Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and I just want to thank councillor Twill first. Hopefully you keep those plans. We'd love to have it out in Cody Banks when it's time to do that one. So I appreciate that. I was in the rink the other day, watching my grandson play, and it's beautiful rink, you know, lots of people happy about it, so love to see it out in Sherwood. Thank you. So the water and sewer utility committee met on November the 12th.
Did your grandson remind you of playing in the young days in Metros? Go ahead. Go ahead there, sorry.
Thank you. And the draft minutes are attached. There are two resolutions for your consideration tonight. If you have any questions or concerns about our minutes, gladly try to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
Can we read the first resolution there?
Moved by Councilor Dron, seconded by Councilor MacLair. Be resolved that the city of Charlottetown proceeds with the lower Malpec Road pumping station upgrades and accepts the bid submitted by Island Coastal Services in the amount of $492,489.86 plus applicable taxes, and also accepts the construction engineering services quote from CBCL in the amount of $20,198.20 plus applicable taxes. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. Okay. Take a quick question there. Council Bernard, you ready for him?
I should know the answer to this, but I'll ask. When we're talking lower Malpec Road, the pumping station, are we talking the one that's behind the community center? No, we're not talking about that. We're talking the one where we... Pardon? Not the one across from Princess Auto?
No, that's Malpec Road. Okay. And the vote? Please cast your vote. In full vote. Okay. Close. 10-0 there, Councilor Dron. 10-0. Okay. Another resolution?
Moved by Councilor Dron, seconded by Councilor MacLair. Be resolved that the city of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of utility inventory materials and accepts the bid submitted by Campbell's Concrete Limited in the amount of $121,466.50 plus applicable taxes. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? Okay. Okay. Please put your chips down. Please cast your vote. Feel like I'm at the Red Shores. Okay. Everyone cast their vote? When did you cast your vote? You're all done? Okay. Okay. Council Bernard didn't vote. Yea or nay, Council Bernard? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Councilor Dron. Environment sustainability. Councilor Trevor McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. Environment and sustainability met on November 25th. The Food Council Advisory Board met on November 21st. Minister in your package, and we'll have one resolution for your consideration and a couple of highlights. The 2020 forest planting season has wrapped up. The urban forestry team have planted over 3,000 trees and shrubs, which is 400 more than last year. It's the first time the city's planted this many trees in one year. And they're still short of the annual goal of replacing trees lost from Fiona. So there's more work ahead. Cleanup efforts from Fiona continued with 187 stumps removed in 2024, and 692 stumps remain to be removed on city property. There's 264 tree-related work orders were completed for tree pruning and removal by city crews and city contractors. And in 2024, hands-on learning opportunities were expanded, and projects involve six schools, UPEI, and Holland College. Thanks for all our educational partners. And funding has been confirmed from TransCanada Trails for 2025. They'll contribute $30,000 to plant 1,000 trees in Charlottetown, including Victoria Park and the Confederation Trail. And on transit note, Charlottetown's year-to-date transit ridership has grown since 2023. However, November ridership fell 4% from November of 2023, which could be weather-related, and there was one holiday in there of Remembrance Day. So Manager Jessica is here. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Do my best.
Okay. Any questions? We have one resolution. Do you want to read that? Madam CAO?
Moved by Councilor McKinnon, seconded by Councilor Beck. Be resolved that council accepts the bid from Wellington Construction in the amount of $15,273,447 before tax for the design and build of the Public Transit Depot. And whereas $10,249,627 before tax of budgeted ICIP funding is available for this project, an increase of $5,23,820 in the city's capital budget from 2025 to 2027 is required. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Councilor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. To the chair, I'm just trying to understand this a little bit more, just in the numbers. If I understood correctly in reading the report, about 10 million of it was from ISIP funding, which then broke out to be, it was looking roughly about the federal government would give about 28%. The provincial was about 23. And, or sorry, originally it was like 40% from the federal contribution, 33 provincial, and 26 from municipal. But if I read the updated chart now, it looks like we've now increased our contribution to 49% of the funding versus the original 26 at the 10 million. So do I have that? Am I understanding that correctly to the chair?
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand this breakdown in the increase. And if we're actually on the, are we now contributing 5 million to this? Maybe I'm just not understanding.
Okay. Do you want him to answer?
Well, it's to the chair, but of course he can.
Okay. Do you want to sit down?
Okay, yeah. The percentages, I'm not quite clear on. I'll get Jessica to clear on that. But yes, we are asking council for 5 million over the next two budgets for the funding for the transit depot. So if you can explain the percentages.
Do you want Jessica? Okay, Jessica, can you just?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. So the original ISIP agreement had the feds and the province contributing around 73%. Because the costs came in over budget, that reduces their contribution to closer to 50%. So in the top of the report, the staff recommendation, where it says the ISIP budget was around 10 million, that's the ISIP budget, including the municipal contribution, federal and provincial. So if it goes to a $15 million price tag, the request is for the city to increase the budget to support the project over the two fiscal years. So in the financial section, that table is accurate, where it says federal 28%, provincial 23, and then Charlottetown 49. So it would be close to 50% funded by provincial and federal, and 49% funded by the municipality.
Councilor Bernard, you want to follow up?
I do, thank you. I do think that helps me understand. So we haven't gone through that capital. So we don't have this approved for that large of an expenditure for the upcoming capital for '25, '26, or '25 to '27, was it? '25 to '27? So are we then committing that here tonight by this resolution, that we would be earmarking then when we go through our capital budgeting process here for the shortfall of the 5 million? We must have some already in the ISIP.
So I can add one comment, and then if anyone else wants to jump in, they can. So what was in the five-year capital plan was what was proposed in the ISIP agreement. So in the five-year capital plan, there wasn't the increased cost that we didn't know were happening. So that would be what is being brought forward to you is the increased costs.
Councilor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. We had talked about this also in finance, and I had asked a question. I wonder if I can direct it to Dan, because the application on this was done two years ago. And Councilor Bernard is right. I mean, we did have a pretty good percentage. And once the agreement was signed two years ago, and that's the cost of what the municipality has to absorb, which is, to me, is not right. This project has not started yet. So we had asked the Director of Finance if he or his staff could get a hold of the province through the ISIP funding and see if we can't get this back up to the percentage that it should be, because it hadn't started yet. No different when I talked earlier tonight about the breakup in the tax revenue for the bioscience cluster, where the government gets 45.9 million, the province gets 34, and we get 10. So they're collecting at 80% of the tax paid. I don't think the city, we just start the project, it's going to be another two years, it's probably going to be more cost increase, and we're going to be ended up over 60%. So I don't know, Dan, if you had a time to get that done, if I could ask that question through Trevor? You don't mind that?
Councilor, is that all right? Defer to the Director of Finance Administration, Mr. Dan Jenkins?
Your worship, through the chair to Councilor Bernard. So just to clarify on the costs for the city. So the 5 million is additional capital budget that we would need. So our contribution to the project would be about 7.5 million before HST and about 8.3 after HST. The question with respect to the ISIP funding and whether or not the province would revisit that, we did make that call, and we did have that conversation with the assistance of Jessica's team. Essentially, the answer we got was because the project hasn't started, we could make a new application if they had additional funds available in the ISIP program. But all of the funds in the ISIP program have been fully assigned to projects. So there's no money for, even if we went back and had it reevaluated, there's no additional funding available. So without that, and that's one of the reasons that, you know, the province, you know, moved away from their additional electric buses, was because there's the federal funding that to replace ISIP hasn't really hit the streets yet, and that's one of the points of concern. So although we could have reapplied, there's just no funding available for us to get.
Second question. Councilor Bernard, let him go first. Okay. Is this your second?
Yeah, I think so. Maybe third. I don't know. Are you going to second?
Second, second. Go, go ahead.
Okay. Sneaking a third one in here, maybe?
I know.
It's just so I understand again, sorry, just, so if there is no additional funding, and was it known in 2022 when the application for it that any shortfall would be then on to the municipality to absorb that? Because this is substantial. This isn't just a few hundred thousand dollars. We're talking, this is several millions of dollars. And then second to that is, I think, you know, we're on the heels right now of our budgeting process. Should we be postponing this until we get through our capital budgeting to understand where we fall? I mean, I don't know if this commits us if we pass the resolution here tonight on this, but I feel like we have to have some discussion how this impacts our capital from a $5 million deficit perspective. So I just want to make them comments. I'm a little leery on supporting this. I like the idea. It's not that I don't want to support the idea. I want to, I'm in on the idea. I'm just not fully in on the budgetary constraints here that we're faced. And if we have an opportunity to go back to ISIP and see if we can, any further funding or the provincial government, it seems like, well, if you want to continue, this is what it's going to cost you, $5 million. Or at least I'm interpreting it that way. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Mayor, for this.
Council McKinnon, so can we defer to? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll just add a couple of points. So the proponents who have bid on this project have submitted RFPs on two occasions now. The first one had to be redone. Just so you're aware, if this doesn't get passed tonight, those expire. So if we later want to redo this, we would have to do a whole restart for a third time. On the funding piece, so there are other funding opportunities out there for zero-emission vehicles and fleet and projects like that. So there's other opportunities we can apply for. I can't promise what that's going to result in, but we obviously can apply. And then another piece of it is that when the bids came in, we asked them to identify alternative solutions as cost savings to the city. So all the proponents in their submissions included cost-saving measures to the city that, once they're selected, we could look at ways to reduce the cost. So there is possible new funding. There is ways we can look at possibly trimming the budget. And I just want to reiterate, like, moving in the direction of electrification, there are operational, it's a hefty upfront investment for long-term operational savings. There is reduced cost of having electric vehicles compared to diesel. So in the long run, the city will get some operational funds back through reduced fuel, maintenance, oil changes, brakes, exhaust, radiator, and all of that. And there's obviously our greenhouse gas piece to this, where we're moving towards transportation's the biggest emitter of greenhouse gases in PEI, 70%. And this is the path for the city to work towards reductions there.
Council Bernard, second time.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, I don't think anybody wants to be against it. I mean, we've been moving this way. We have the buses ordered. The transit depot has to be built. Time is of the essence now. But I'm just wondering, since we're in this predicament, and apparently there's no ISIP funding left, I assume that's for this calendar year. So is there nothing coming in for ISIP, they're not restocking it in 2025, '26? Okay. So programs that you talked about, there's a possibility of getting funding, are we still eligible even though the program, the project has started? Because usually, once they're started, you can't apply for the funding.
Good God, mate. Council McKinnon? Do you want to answer it?
Thank you, sure. Take a go at it. Just thank you, Jessica, and all your staff, that have been doing work for this for over two years. We do need the depot, as Council Bernard said. If we don't go forward with this, that ISIP, $10 million is gone. We don't, it's a gamble what the other opportunities out there will be, what we can get. We don't know what we're going to get. So, if that answers your question?
No, no.
Good. Okay. Council Twill? Yes, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just on the eligibility of the funding, when you say it's gone, so what is the date? What is the final drop date where we have to pass a resolution to indicate to our funding partners that we're ready to move forward? When we say the funding is gone, I'm looking for the exact date, and I'm looking for whether or not we would reapply. Let's say, you know, it's this particular location or another location, or whatever the case may be. You know, we're talking about an additional $5 million. That's not chunk change. I'd like to get that information as well. So what exactly is, you know, the date, the cutoff where we're truly eligible for that funding?
Council McKinnon?
Thank you, Councilor Twill, for your question. I'll defer the cutoff date to Manager Jessica or to Dan, if they know the funding. But I understand that when this, if it doesn't go beyond tonight's council, that the opportunity to get that money expires. And then if we're looking at another location, we would have to purchase another piece of land. We've committed to this. Bless you. So we've committed to this location. We've had conversations with, or staff have had conversations with the manager of T3 Transit, quite confident that this will work, will fit the needs for us, and conversations have been had that if down the road, if they need to move part of that other business away, that they will. So I think this is the perfect location for it. Thank you.
Council MacLair? Well, he did. Jessica?
Thank you, Councilor.
Jessica or Dan? Jessica?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So our ISIP agreement that we have... Through you, Mr. Chair. So our ISIP agreement that we have has quite a bit of time to it. So we can spend up until now, until 2033, to spend that money. We can't, the ISIP pot, the projects have ended, so we can't submit new applications and expect more money. Maybe we can ask for changes to our existing agreement. But again, I just want to reiterate that the submissions that we're looking at today, they expire on December 17th, so in a week.
Counsel McLeer?
Thank you, Counsel McKinnon. So just so I'm clear, Jessica, and Dan, you said ISIP tap, the ISIP fund pot is dry. You alluded to other funding opportunities. I just wondered if you might elaborate potentially what that might look like or who they are. And then failing that, there's no more, those opportunities don't work out, Dan, and as Counsel Mataris has said, going into our budget in a year, we're pretty much, we're pretty much committing five million to our capital budget, twenty-five, twenty-seven, automatic out of the gate, correct?
Okay. Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Counsel McLeer, for your question. I will refer that to Jessica or to Dan.
Yep.
The question was to Dan.
I can add one piece, and Dan can add more if he wants to add to that. So the other funding source I was referring to is other federal funding through the Zero Emissions Transit Fund. We've not applied for it yet, but it's there to support municipalities in transitioning to electric fleet and capital building projects. And I'm trying to remember, was there a second part to your question?
Okay.
Yeah, no, and failing that, not being successful, we're committing, we're pretty much committed to the five million out of the twenty, twenty-five to twenty-seven capital budget years.
Yeah, it would be a little more than five million. So I think about eight million, roughly, would be Charlotte Town's share of the transit depot portion of the project. I did have the opportunity to do some number crunching, if you will, in terms of budget implications of the electrification project over the last couple of days. I'm happy to share those with you, just to give you an idea of the scope, of the impact, both in capital budgets, but also on the operational budget. I think it's, you know, I think it's a great initiative, but I do have some concerns with respect to the financial impacts on the city and potentially on tax rates. So happy to share those with you if.
Well, can we leave that for the budget presentation? Because what we're dealing with is a resolution here to approve the funding for this transit shed. Correct there, Counsel McKinnon? Yeah, so we get the budget presentation coming up this week. Question?
Question called.
Question's called.
Uh, just.
Now, the question's called there, Counsel Twill. Okay, please cast your vote. Okay, nine one. Is that it, Counsel? Thank you very kindly, Counsel McKinnon. We have Public Works, Counsel Kevin Ramsey.
Sit too long.
Okay, Counsel Ramsey. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council. We, Public Works Committee met on November 6, 2024. The minutes are included in your package. We also met on December 4, and those minutes will be, will be provided at a later date. The first meeting was with the former Chair, Counselor McCabe, and the second one was with me. The Civic Board of Persons with Disabilities met on November 19, and those minutes are in your package. We also have two resolutions for your consideration. Any questions? We're going to give her a shot.
Okay. Want to read that first resolution there?
Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of a spring public request for quotes for rectangular rapid flashing beacons, the purchase of an additional twelve rectangular rapid flashing beacons units from the low submission of RK Associates at a unit rate of two thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents, each for a total of thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Oh, Counsel Beck. Got a question? Counsel Beck?
We had this before, or this came before us, I think, at one point, didn't it, I believe?
Ask Counsel Ramsey.
Anyway, that's okay. The, this is to purchase twelve. I think some of them is, some of them are being used to increase their supply for repairs and replacements and stuff like that. Have the, are other ones been allocated, or is those decisions going to be made at a later time?
Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for your question, Counsel Beck. I believe, I don't think they're all out yet, or is it Paul, would you know, our acting manager, or they're close to it. And these are going to be new ones that we're going to add to the inventory in case something happens through the winter. Like, we're going to have some in our inventory to replace them until they're fixed. And plus, they're going to be going in certain areas also, too. If that makes any sense to you, what I'm trying to spit out here. I haven't sitting too long. I'm more out. I want to go home.
Okay. Maybe I'll read three. Are they all being used for stocking purposes? Or so, okay, so some of these ones, the twelve that are in, let's say, three are going to be kept for replacements. Are the other, have the other nine been assigned, or how are they going to be assigned, I guess is my question? Because I do have some areas that I think where they can be used. So is there any of these that are going to be looked at in terms of putting them around in various spots?
Counsel Ramsey.
I'm going to pass that on to our acting manager, Paul. That's operational, so I want to pass that on to him.
Mr. Johnson?
Your worship, mic's on. My understanding is, this is, in essence, a reorder. Yes, we purchased some in the spring. You would have passed that resolution. The vendor is holding the price, and we are getting some more now. My understanding is, everything we purchased in the spring, which would have been in the report, but I don't remember, it was probably around twenty, and each site requires two, one on each side of the street. What we purchased in the spring is already out and inutilized. These additional twelve, which will be six sites, a couple of them will, four of them, will probably be held for replacements on damage and that sort of thing. The other three staff have an intention of where they're going to go. Couldn't tell you those sites right away, and I couldn't tell you whether they're going to get them in time to get them out this fall, or whether they'll be able to do it during the winter weather or not. But if not, we've got two or three ready to go in the spring, and we'll be probably coming back to you in the spring again with another order for 2025 installations.
And Counsel Ramsey, be looking, page 178, second paragraph just below your chart. It gives a breakdown of four or five crosswalks, one and two to put into reserve. Did you want to stand up?
Like, I'm doing well. I'm getting the blood circulating. But I must say that since we started installing them, Your Worship, and I had a lot of requests out on Northwood Road there by water view and everything, the residents are very pleased with them. There's a safety issue with it, and people can really see those signs flashing. So it really helps an awful lot. Thank you.
Question? Question's called.
Please cast your vote.
Ten, zero. Okay. Okay, Counsel Ramsey, that's.
We've got one more.
One more? Okay, and I'll just accept that. Okay, sir? She's got it now? Okay.
Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for snow clearing of municipal properties, low submission bids plus all applicable taxes for the following sites be accepted. Fire Station Two Facility, PD Construction Limited, sixty-five hundred dollars. West Royalty Civic Building, East Royalty Civic Building, Hillsborough Park Civic, Blanchard Building, Gordon Drive, all DB Trucking, and all twenty-eight hundred dollars. Kirkwood Police Station, PD Construction Limited, for seven thousand dollars. Brackley Point Roadworks Building, Dickinson Snow Removal for ten thousand dollars, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
We got a question.
Yep. Can you just turn her on there, please?
Hi. And I shouldn't, I mean, I just left this committee, but the, like, the Public Works Building, why do we pay for snow removal for Public Works Building when we have trucks that go out and plow and do stuff? Why can't they plow their own parking lot? Just curious.
Turn them on.
As a former Chair to the new Chair, that's a great question. Like, we have our own gear, so maybe our acting manager can answer that. No, that is, that's a great question.
Mr. Johnson?
Your worship, this tender was prepared before I stepped in to assist as manager, so I cannot answer that question. We do plow McLeer Drive Facility, Works Facility, which the Public Works Department is still operating out of. The Brackley Point Road Facility, which I'm calling the new one, is Recreation and Water and Sewer Utility Departments. So slightly different, but I don't know the reasoning that was determined a few months ago when the tender was prepared.
Does Richard have any comments, Richard, or?
Simply that it's not the Public Works Building. That's the Water and Sewer Utility Building. So if there's a, we need the yard cleaned for employees to be able to get into work. Similar to any of the other buildings. I mean, it's called the Public Works Building, but it's actually for Water and Sewer and Parks and Rec.
Okay. Did you want to, Counsel McKinnon, did you want to make a comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just in response to what Mr. McCulain just said, if it's a Water and Sewer building, why is this under Public Works? As their tenant, should that not be under Water and Sewer?
Parks and Recreation's in the building. Anymore, Richard? Mr. McCulain?
Your worship, I could add that the Water and Sewer Utility pays rent on that building, and it is a Public Works-owned building, and Parks and Rec is one tenant, Water and Sewer is the other tenant.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask one?
Sure, you can go. Second question.
Sorry, I know it's twenty-eight. I'm sorry. So have we ever thought of, like, using our own people that do snow removal to do snow removal for our city buildings? And I'm not being facetious when I ask the question. It's just that we go out and do snow removal, and we're paying, or we're asking for, I don't know, thirty thousand dollars to plow our city buildings. I'm just struggling with how I, this makes sense. Sorry.
Counsel, Counsel Ramsey?
I got no answers, Counsel McCabe. Like, you chaired this, and, I mean, these things went through, like, every year, and I'm just, sorry, sort of taken back to you asking me all these questions, because I don't know. I don't have an answer for it.
Yeah. Well, we can do a review.
You know, and Public Works should have looked at it last year. Thank you.
Can I quick, quick, I have the capacity to do one of my questions.
Well, we'll do a review. Paul, do you want to just answer that?
Would there be a capacity?
Yeah, just, just let him, please.
Your worship, there would be a capacity, but, you know, Public Works is plowing your streets as well, so you have to make a decision of where to go first. I would suggest for twenty-eight hundred dollars for the run of a season, you're getting a pretty good price as opposed to operating our own equipment and fuel and staff and deferring our goods and services to other duties within the city that you'll all be asking why we weren't there soon enough.
Okay. Okay. Questions on the floor? Please cast your vote. Yea or nay? Yes or no? You're not coming up there, but, oh, ten, zero. Okay, Counsel Ramsey, that's it? Thank you very, thank you very much. You can remain seated.
I will, sir.
Finance Audit Tendering Administration Counselor, John McLeer.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Finance Audit and Tendering Administration Committee met December 10, 2024, and that those, that information is in your package. There's no resolutions for your consideration this evening. However, I'd like to take a minute here to welcome and introduce our new finance manager, Lane Pino. Stand up, Lane, and take a bow.
Good to see you, Lane.
Lane, Lane, welcome aboard, Lane. Lane comes to us with great experience, well-credentialed. He has served in the public sector with the governor PEI for seventeen years. Since 2021, Lane has been Health PEI, Health PEI, most recently as Acting Chief Financial Officer for Health PEI. And prior to acting as CFO, is Director of Fiscal Planning and Audit. And prior to his assignment with Health PEI, Lane was CFO for the Department of Social Development and Housing. And Lane was Manager of Administration Services with Department of Finance and Municipal Affairs from 2010 to 2013. Lane also had a successful career in the private sector from ninety-eight to 207, where he was Finance Manager and later Vice President of Finance for Online Support, a very successful island company. Some of you may know as the founder, that Jamie Hill. Anyway, we are fortunate to have attracted Lane to our organization, very confident he'll bring effective leadership to finance team and quickly become a trusted and valued resource. Lane, welcome. A pleasure. Look forward to meeting with you. And I don't know, yeah, so I'll continue on. If there's any questions regarding.
His appointment.
The minutes or any information in your package, I'd be doing my best to answer them. If not, I've got the capable CFO, Dan Jenkins here, and, or CAO.
And yourself.
Took that, and, yeah, well, I might even be able to answer something.
Okay. Counsel Twill?
Thank you for your report. Counsel McLeer, I'd like to draw your attention to the legal opinion on the J. Frank Macaulay Park pathway. As requested at a council meeting, I made the request a month ago, September the 10th, '24, administration requested received a legal opinion whether council has the authority to send the project to public, public tender. The opinion supported council's decision to proceed to the public tendering stating that proceeding is a non-competitive manner for a contract greater value than twenty-five thousand is a discretionary decision of council. Opinion also indicates the hopefulness that the procurement bylaw being drafted may provide greater guidance to council on what the circumstances may warrant a non-competitive procurement process. Public tender for this project is underway. The quest for council, to request and receive a legal opinion on whether council has the authority to send the project to public tender, that wasn't the question. To my mind, that's misleading. The question was, did the Parks and Recreation Committee, was it in full compliance? The question was, did the Parks and Recreation Committee, was it in full compliance with the decision that was made originally by staff which recommended to continue on with the original tender? I asked at the time, Mr. Jenkins, Frank Quinn, before we took our first vote, and yes, we are in full compliance. So then, at the recent Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, I asked, where was the legal opinion? The legal opinion wasn't there. I still haven't gotten a copy of the legal opinion, and I was the one that made the request. Not sure why that is, but nonetheless, the department and the committee was in full compliance of maintaining and staying with the, the original tender. So I'm not sure why that is written the way that it is, because that's not accurate. What's in the minister is not accurate at all. The question was, were, was the committee in full compliance? Mr. Jenkins, you said yes, and so did Frank Quinn. So I'm asking the question, why was this written the way it was, and why did it not answer the question that we asked? Because we were in full compliance. That was the question, not whether or not city council has discretionary use to go back to another tender. Is that right, Mr. Matart? Okay. Who's going to address that one?
Proceed to the chair. Chair, first.
Yeah, Counselor Twill, I just, my first stab at it would be, it did, the fact that it was over the $25,000, over the $25,000 threshold, and there was a gap in the, in the project or the phases of it, that, that we wanted to follow what we felt was our protocol or procurement bylaw to, to send it out for, send it out for, send it out for second tender. So unless, Dan, do you have anything you want to, can you add to that? Or, I don't know if Legal has anything to share?
Thanks, Chair. Through your worship, I don't have anything to add, but we do have legal counsel here. I don't know if...
She's looking at the opinion now.
Katie wanted to speak to it?
I am looking at it.
Just turn on your mic.
I'll admit, this is, this is the first I am looking at it.
Yeah.
But we were clear in it that it was appropriate and defensible for council to proceed to public tender for Phase Two of the work. That was our opinion.
Counselor Beck? No, 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 just, no, no, just Counselor Beck, like, I, no, I, they're not going to wrap it up with just one question.
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather...
I'd rather you just speak now. Just go ahead.
No, I'd prefer, because I'm coming partway into conversation. Can we wrap that up?
The conversation here is, just ask, I know, just ask your question.
No, it's unrelated to this.
It's unrelated.
Okay, I'm not...
So you want this debate to continue? Okay. No, no, I'm, it's close to 8 o'clock. Come on.
Again, I'll reiterate one more time. Was the Parks and Recreation Committee in full compliance with the recommendation from our Parks and Recreation Manager, and I questioned Mr. Jenkins at the time, and they both indicated in no uncertain terms that we were in full compliance. It had nothing to do with, you know, whether or not it was $25,000 or over. Yes, obviously, the contract is over $25,000. That wasn't the question. Question was, were we in full compliance? Our staff said we were in full compliance. Then, it came to council last month, vote went 5-5. Mayor broke the tie in favor to continue on with a new contract after Island Coastal won the bid fair and square. So, I'm, I'm, I question why it was, in the minutes, why it's written the way that it is. We were in full compliance, and where, where's the copy of, of the, of the legal opinion? I've yet to receive a copy after, I was the one that requested the copy. We were in full compliance. That's what the question was. That's why I asked the legal opinion. Not whether or not, whether, not whether or not council has discretionary, you know, flexibility to, to, to override, override that and go to another tender.
Yeah. So, Katie, do you just want to weigh into what I said? Because the decision's already been made. It was 5-5, tie was broken, we're moving on, but you just want to wrap it? And if you want to see the letter, go to the CAO's office. Okay? Go.
Nothing more than what was previously stated.
Yeah. Nothing, nothing more than what's, what was previously stated. Yeah. Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, Counselor Beck, do you want to ask your question? Is it relevant, or is it new question?
It's not relevant to the other part, no.
Yeah, can you just hand it?
Yeah. I'm just looking for a little bit of help in under, or understanding page 208, Counselor McLeir, if you, if you could. I see, under City Revenue Less Expenditures, sorry, I'm getting it, 6.2 million, prior year operating surplus, 6.34, city surplus, 1.120,000. Are these projection figures that we're looking at here, or, I'm just trying, I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding this page, how to interpret it and what it all means. If you could maybe give me some guidance on that?
What page again? Two?
Page 208.
208, and, no, no, you must, and, we're into the auditor's report.
You're on the auditor's.
My 208, I'm on the auditor's report.
Yeah. Purchases, revenues.
Yeah.
Is that where you are? Are you on the statement, financial statement?
Dan, are you up to where Counselor Beck is?
Thank you, through the, if you would, through your worship to the chair. And Counselor Beck, so on my package, it's on page 216.
Thank you.
I think the...
Thank you. It's 216.
Seven months ending October 31st.
Yeah.
And, and the figures you're looking at, the original budget is the budget that was passed back in, in March. Current year-to-date are the actual expenditures, so it's not a forecast. It's, it's, it's actual revenues in and expenditures made. And then the 2024 is the comparative figure for the same period last year. And the funds available are the difference between what we spent, or what we've, what we've earned in income versus what our original budget was. Hope that clarifies it.
But as, as at the end of October 31st, 2024, financially, we're in a good position, correct?
Correct.
That's, that's the good news. Okay. John, is that it? Counselor McLeir? Okay. Strategic priorities, communications, intergovernmental cooperation? Counselor Matart? Yep? Go ahead.
Thank you. Just one sec here, let me get, okay, thank you. The, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to chair the Strategic Priorities Communication and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee. So I have Counselor Beck sitting here next to me in case I mess that up, because he's been used to saying that for a long time. So, yeah, so we met on, so my first meeting of the, of this committee was on November 28th of 2024. We do have one resolution for your consideration, and you will note in your package that there is a project underway for the bylaw update project, I guess is what we're calling it. Melanie was gracious enough to come to our committee meeting last week and present the project plan on that, so if you have any questions on that, Melanie is here, I see her in the back room, or the back of the room there this evening, and she would, could help me address any questions on the bylaw refresh project. So it's exciting, because a lot of what is identified there is a lot of what we keep hearing here. I know the number one is the procurement bylaw has been identified. There's 10 of them, I believe, but there's also an opportunity for some of these that will continue to work, not only, but they'll work parallel with each other, so there'll be many of them going on, and there is some going on as well, varying degrees of updates and things that need to happen. So it was a great opportunity to, to take the chair for that meeting and come in at the right time here with this bylaw refresh project. So any questions, please let me know, and otherwise, we have one resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to, okay, Counselor Beck?
Sorry. I'm just, okay, again, in my package, it's on page 384. It's under the Priority Bylaws for 2024, '25. The Community Standards is a new bylaw that we're going to be putting in under Public Works. My question is, and I, I thought that we had identified the unsightly premises as a priority for revamping the process and that, and I'm wondering if that's being included in the community standards? Because I think we had a discussion about that, did we not, about, because we were talking about taking the community standards and integrating some of the bylaws that were currently existing, and kind of folding them into the community standards bylaw? And is that something that is still on the books? I don't know whether, probably not a fair question to ask Counselor Matart, but maybe the CAO might be able to answer that.
Can we ask?
Or I'll put it in through him?
Yeah, could you defer?
If you wanted to. Go ahead.
If you wish to defer, the Counselor...
Interesting, I can't answer that, but, you know, I thought we were going, I thought you were first...
That's a first, I take it.
Capital Construction bylaw, which, you know, has garnered some attention that we've talked about, so I thought that's the one you were referring to, but if we do have Mr. Jenkins here or Melanie, I'm not trying, one of yous can address that from a by, I guess it's back in Public Works, and maybe it's not fair to ask the acting manager at this as well, so I'm not sure who can answer the question. Can the CAO address it? I'll put it to somebody.
Who wishes to take it on?
Or we can defer, that I can get you an answer.
Which bylaw was it again?
The Community Standards bylaw.
No, the one that you're, that'll be...
Yeah.
Okay.
Three-year worship, yes, we're considering combining those, but the work still has to be done to look at how they would combine together. Not just that, potentially, in a community standards bylaw, you could find any non-smoking bylaws that you have and all sorts of things like that. That'll be figured out as they start the, the process of working on the community standards bylaw, yeah, or the other bylaws as well.
Dan, do you want to say something? Is that what you're...
Sure, just through your worship to Counselor Beck, one of the, one of the ideas would be that the process, the process is implicit in the unsightly bylaw, really, the, the hot points, in terms of the amount of time it takes to, to, to follow up and so on. So the work is going to have to be done to improve that process, so it's quite possible that we might come back with a quick fix on the unsightly premises bylaw, and then later integrate it into the community services bylaw, but that'll, that determination will be made as, as we proceed.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. And I sit on this committee, and I'm sure we had some lengthy discussion around indicating something in this package, unless I'm missing it, that there was some discussion around some of these bylaws being placed into respective committees where they weren't originally there before, and I know that that work will come later, but I thought we were going to put some reference in there so that when counselors read this package, they would understand, and, for example, the patio bylaw has never been under planning and heritage. That's been under Public Works, it's been under Protective Services, and I know that tonight is not the night to be discussing bylaws, but I thought we were going to put some indication in there, and if it's in there and I've missed it, I apologize, Chair, but I do remember us having that discussion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You are correct. What we were, what we were trying to do was identify some of the issues or concerns that were brought up on particular bylaws through this project. At the committee meeting, we didn't feel it appropriate either to start addressing those. However, to alleviate some concern here tonight at council, I think we were going to just put an asterisk around some of them to say that there are further discussions that are occurring. The patio bylaw, be an example, the construction, capital construction bylaw, which we, we know we've had some discussion about that, but there has been no bylaw on that. So although it's on here, you know, and I think as Chair, certainly I can't speak to all these bylaws, I think they should be spoken to based on their area of responsibility and where they stand in the various committees, if we do have discussions around that. But you are correct, Counselor, or, sorry, Deputy Mayor, that there is a couple there that do have an asterisk around them, because we, there is some work that needs to be done in redefining where they may have their home, as opposed to where they are now, and ones that we haven't had any discussion or approval on, i.e. the capital construction bylaw. So I hope that addresses your question, but you are...
Counselor Twill?
Do we have to extend?
Oh, 8 o'clock, we need a motion, motion to, moved by Counsel McKinnon, seconded by Counsel Ramsey. All in favor? Please, pleasure. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Twill.
Yeah. Just one of the line items there, council size bylaw. What, where's that come from?
That had to be established.
Just one sec. Do you know anything about that, Counsel Matart?
Sorry, I can't, I'm a chairer. Sorry, Counselor Twill, did you say council size bylaw? Again, I think this would go back to, I can't address all of these individually, that would back in the committee. I would assume that this list, this comprehensive list, that would have came from the work that we did as a council, when we were going through all the various bylaws that we have in the order of which they were, so is it listed as new? Sorry, I'm, I'm missing the line, pardon me? It's under consideration. I'm not sure where it's coming from or who brought it forward, but again, some of these...
It was established whenever the MGA was...
So I'm, I'm hearing it was established when the MGA was implemented.
Okay. Guys, can we just, are you done there?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to, I apologize, I'm trying to...
No, I know.
...answer the best I can, but I feel, like I say, some of these, the appropriate manager of that area, I'm just not seeing it here right in front of me right quick, and I'm just going through here if I could see it where it was and where...
Yep.
295, I don't have...
Do you want some assistance from the CAO?
Please, yeah, thank you, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. And through to Counselor Twill, it's an existing bylaw. So in this package, as you hear, like, it's a list of everything that exists. The only thing that's mentioned as new is community standards as a way to, like, combine and, what was the other one? There was a couple of other ones. They're indicated as new, so the patio bylaw would be a new one. Parks usage bylaw was a new one as well, but all those other ones that are listed there are existing. So we might find, when we look at some of these bylaws, they don't really need updating the longer list, but it's always good to check back to see where things are at, to see if there are any tweaks, but likely that one, there's not much that's going to change with it.
Okay. Do you want a resolution? Do you want to read the resolution? Good. Or do you want to respond anymore?
I just want to go back to that. Thank you for that update, CAO, you know, and I know that, I see it here now, so it does fall within, obviously, my, my portfolio here, but again, I don't have, I need management or the CAO to speak to some of these to address it. So if you do have a specific question around that, we can certainly come back with some information on that, but I can't address all of these questions here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a resolution?
Moved by Counselor Matart, seconded by Deputy Mary Ankaugh. Be it resolved that council requests that Elections PEI consider the appointment to oversee and run the City of Charlottetown municipal elections, and if amenable, City of Charlottetown's administration staff will work with Elections PEI to lead and coordinate all operational requirements pertaining to municipal elections, including contracts, agreements, and drafting recommended bylaw amendments. And further, if Elections PEI are amenable to accepting the appointment as municipal electoral officer, it is understood that members of council will not be consulted or involved with administration of municipal elections.
Okay. Questions called? Okay. Elections PEI, okay. Just one second. Open. Please cast your vote. Excellent. Okay, we'll close it. 10-0. Elections PEI. Thank you, Dan. Okay. Okay. We have no business, no resolution, so I have a resolution here, number seven. Motion to move into a closed session as per section one nineteen, subsection number one of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island, one nineteen, subsection one E, matters still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision, decision, and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. There are three, A D P, workforce manager, software program, contract, land exchange agreement, land exchange agreement, community garden proposed land purchase, subsection one nineteen, section one nineteen, subsection one D, human resource matters, including labor relations or employee negotiations, interim C O. Questions called? All those in favor to go into a closed session? We're going into a closed session. Counsel.
Act of the open meeting. So we have four resolutions?
Three, three.
The C A O too, right?
There's just three.
And that's there? Okay. Okay. Do you want to? Who's moved? The first one is about the workforce manager update.
No.
Okay.
The first one is.
Go ahead.
The first one is.
Go ahead.
I'll read it. Okay. Moved by councillor McAlire, seconded by councillor Bernard, that the city of Charlottetown agrees to a land exchange of city property, including the recently closed portion of Richmond Street and Dorchester Street, P I D three, three, six, three, four, five, with Maritime Electric Corporation Limited for a portion of Maritime Electric Corporation Limited property, P I D three, three, eight, nine, two, one, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Shh, just let her finish. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine, zero. Can you give me that, please? So I can write down nine, zero? Thank you. Nine, zero. Can you read the next resolution? Thank you.
Okay. Moved by councillor Beck, seconded by councillor McCabe, that council appoint Sue Fraser as interim chief administrative officer effective January sixth, twenty twenty five, as per the terms and conditions of her employment contract.
Questions? No, 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 just one second. Councillor Twill absent.
Thank you. I just want to state that I can't support this. This is going to be a hundred thousand dollar plus expenditure to the city of Charlottetown. I think we have not one, not two, but three capable people willing or are here, employed by the city corporation, that could step in as they've shown in the past when the C A O has gone off and leave or on a conference or anything. Everything went well. So I can't support another expenditure of this magnitude. So I will not be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions called? Please put up your hand. All in favor of the resolution. Now, I get to vote, so I'm in favor too. So, all against? Okay, councillors Duran and McKinnon. Can you just give me that? Is there another one?
Just one.
Yep. Just let me get that down. Councillors. And Duran. Opposed? Okay, do you want to read the next one?
Okay. Moved by councillor Beck, seconded by councillor McCabe, that the city of Charlottetown accept the A D P workforce manager upgrade project at a cost of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents, plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? No, 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 just one second. Councillor Twill, I see the green light. Just guys. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to state that I can't support this. This is going to be a hundred thousand dollar plus expenditure to the city of Charlottetown. I think we have not one, not two, but three capable people willing or are here, employed by the city corporation, that could step in as they've shown in the past when the C A O has gone off and leave or on a conference or anything. Everything went well. So I can't support another expenditure of this magnitude. So I will not be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions called? Please put up your hand. All in favor of the resolution. Now, I get to vote, so I'm in favor too. So, all against? Okay, councillors Duran and McKinnon. Can you just give me that? Is there another one?
Just one.
Yep. Just let me get that down. Councillors. And Duran. Opposed? Okay, do you want to read the next one?
Okay. Moved by councillor Beck, seconded by councillor McCabe, that the city of Charlottetown accept the A D P workforce manager upgrade project at a cost of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty cents, plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? No green lights? All in favor, please raise your hand. Nine, zero. Councillor Twill absent. Deputy Mayor, thank you for playing that role. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. And please enjoy the rest of your evening. Motion adjourned? All those in favor?